We would archive it after the fact. We'll have the wrong time, so automatically to our website. So it'll say like 2:00 PM on like in like the wrong date. And so sometimes you have to make sure just like double check when you're uh when you like go to like the archive of it. Or else it'll be like all weird. Maybe they fixed that glitch because I don't know. That's always what I was doing before.
Should we uh start letting in folks or commissioners or anything?
Yeah, if you see him, I don't I don't see any of them.
Okay, all right, well, I'm gonna admit all. Seems like a lot of familiar names.
Okay, so Erin, I was just able to archive last night's BZA meeting and I see what you mean about the time. So should I change it to the date and the start time of the meeting that happened?
Correct, yeah.
So I'm changing it to yesterday.
Um, really quick before we start recording, Justin, um, since you signed in and you're the host, can you make me the co-host? Um, you just like click next to my name and then um make me as co-host. Cool, and then um I will start recording right now.
Thanks for joining everyone, just getting a few Zoom settings finalized, but appreciate everyone being here.
All right, it looks like I have quorum for the meeting. Are we ready to start? Uh, City Clerk, are you guys still working on getting recordings and stuff up and going?
Sorry, I'm on mute. Justin, Erin, are we good to go with recording? Okay, great, uh then Baker, I'm ready to call when you are.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, we will call the City of Ferndale Planning Commission meeting of January 20th, 2021 to order at 6:33 PM. We will begin with a roll call of the members by our city clerk, please.
Commissioner Azar.
Here.
Commissioner Braga.
Here.
Commissioner Brazen.
Here.
Commissioner Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Hagvors.
Here.
Commissioner Haskew. Commissioner Haskew.
She notified us that she was going to be absent this evening.
Oh, okay, thank you. Councilman Polica.
Here in Ferndale.
Commissioner Shalater.
Here.
And Chair Baker.
Here, thank you. Is there a motion to excuse Commissioner Haskew's absence?
Foster moves to excuse.
Polica seconds.
Thank you, I've got a motion from Commissioner Foster with a second from Commissioner Brazen. We will have a roll call vote for excusing Commissioner Haskew's absence.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagvors.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shalater.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you, that motion passes. All right, I see the item number two is electronic meeting procedures. Does our city staff have anything to share on that or do you just want to give me a quick, want me to do the overview?
Um, I can briefly just show the slide real quick.
Great, thank you, Justin.
Um, if everyone can see my screen, um. There are a few items on each agenda, but really one uh public hearing, so just focused on that. But really, the um process for public comment is still the same. So uh we are video conferencing under um the emergency rules um set forth and approved by the city. So if you're using the video conferencing feature through Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or um the reactions feature. If you are on a newer version of Zoom, um please state your name, express your interest when called upon doing so. Um, and then limit your comment to three minutes. We do have the chat feature on, but we will not be actively monitoring that just uh with our small crew. It's sort of a lot to keep track of, um but we uh we did put a link in the chat right now in case people do want to sign in. And there's an option to um follow along some of the projects that have been on the commission as well. We also, I think, have a couple of phone-in callers as well. So uh when it comes time after the video conferencing group, um the phone-in audience, the clerk will read off the last four digits of the phone number. Unmute uh those callers and please follow the same process, state your name, um express your interest when called upon to do so. And then limit your comments to three minutes.
Thanks so much, Justin, and for people who um aren't regular Zoom users, um if you're looking for that raise your hand uh feature. It is under the participants button uh near the bottom of your screen. If you click on participants, you'll see something that says raise your hand. Um, or perhaps if you're using a different version, it's a reaction feature rather than a raise your hand. All right, thanks, Justin. All right, we will move on to item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening from our city staff?
None at this time.
Foster missed to approve as presented. I'm sorry, Kate.
Hagvors seconds.
Got it. We've got a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Commissioner Foster with a second by Commissioner Hagvors. We will have a roll call vote on that item.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagvors.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shalater.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you, the item passes. We typically do things like that by a hand raise um and a pretty simple vote when we're in person. But thank you to our city clerk, it's better for the minutes just to do a roll call even on small things like that. We will move on to our next item, uh commission elections. Every January, we have a few internal elections and appointments to do. Do we have a an introduction from our city staff on this one?
Yes, thanks Chair Baker. Again, this is Justin Lyons, Planning Manager for the city. So tonight, we have elections for three positions, uh one being the Chair of the Commission. Uh, second being the Vice Chair of the Commission and then also uh the uh Board of Zoning Appeals Liaison. So uh a member of the Commission, um if nominated and chosen would be uh representing as an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And it's a very valuable role, sharing um ordinance updates and just informing both boards of uh what's going on. So um we'll go through those three elections. The general process is that um the Chair would open the floor for nominations. And the Chair would recognize a member making that nomination. If you uh are making a nomination, please state your name for the record and the nomination of the position. And who you would be or who you would be nominating for that position. If the nominee accepts that um position and nomination, um the Chair would open things up for a uh a motion. And then any discussion before that is approved. So I can repeat that as we go through it, but uh that's generally uh my understanding of the elections.
Thanks, Justin. All right, uh, we've got three positions to elect this evening um as part of our internal governance. The first would be the election for Planning Commission Chair. I would open the floor for any nominations for Planning Commission Chair.
Through the Chair, this Commissioner Brazen, I would like to nominate Kate Baker for Chair again.
My second nomination, Greg Polica.
Thank you, that was a nomination by Commissioner Foster with a second by Councilman Polica for. Oh, God, sorry, I'm looking at Foster, but I said Brazen.
She beat me to it, no worries.
Nomination by Commissioner Brazen, the second by Commissioner Polica. I would accept that nomination. Are there any other nominations for Planning Commission Chair? Hearing none at this time, is there any other discussion on this motion?
Um, in case there wasn't an actual motion, Foster would move for the nomination of Chair Baker. As to maintain a role as Chair of the Planning Commission.
I second that, Brazen.
That's a great point. Nomination and emotion may not be the same things. Is does this work for you, City Clerk? We had a nomination um and then we had a formal motion?
Um, that would certainly cover it. I think the nomination was sufficient as it was, given the official status of the Planning Commission under a city government. So um covering bases is never a problem, but the nomination on its own is fine.
Thank you, in that case, would you like us to resend the motion to make it cleaner?
Uh, no, I I'll just leave it out.
Okay, great, uh then when you are ready, uh we'll have a roll call vote on uh the nomination of Kate Baker to serve as Planning Commission Chair.
All right, Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagvors.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shalater.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you, that motion passes. Thank you, guys, um we've got a big year coming up, I look forward to it. We now have the position of Vice Chair. Uh, I would open the floor for nominations. And I'm not sure if I'm allowed, am I allowed to nominate, City Clerk? I don't usually make motions.
Uh, yes, you are, you're the Chair of the meeting, anyone um uh any member of the Commission may make a nomination.
Thank you, I would nominate Michelle Foster uh to continue serving as our Vice Chair.
Polica seconds.
Thank you, I accept.
Thank you, are there any other nominations at this time for Vice Chair? Any additional discussion on that motion? All right, we have a motion uh or a nomination on the floor uh for Michelle Foster to serve as the Vice Chair nominated by Baker, seconded by Polica. We'll have a roll call vote on that, please.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagvors.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shalater.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you, that passes. Uh, next would be the nomination of the liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, it hasn't been available for a little while, so do we have any nominations uh for liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals? You're allowed to nominate yourself if you would like. Don't make me pick people. Well, if I don't see any nominations forthcoming, uh, Justin, would you prefer that we let this sit until the next meeting?
We can, we can, yes. And I can share more information about what that role is. I I would say that the BCA does not, definitely does not meet as often as the Planning Commission. But uh definitely appreciate anyone who uh is interested going forward.
If there's no one else interested, this is Commissioner Foster and I would be interested, uh, again, if no one else wanted to take the preference.
Through the Chair. Um, have we spoken to anyone in the BCA uh board to see if they were interested in serving Planning Commission?
I don't know that we have any vacancies at this time.
Right, yeah, uh, through the Chair, we we did um look at that as an option, but since the Planning Commission's full, it had had to be a member of the Planning Commission.
Good question, Councilman, thank you. All right, we have a nomination on the floor uh for Michelle Foster to serve as our liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals for 2021.
I'll second that nomination, Hagvors.
Thank you. All right, we've got a nomination of Commissioner Foster by Commissioner Foster with a second by Commissioner Hagvors. Any additional discussion on that or additional nominations? All right, we will have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Hagvors.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shalater.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, thank you, that motion passes. Wonderful, thank you, everybody, thanks for stepping up. Thanks for stepping up twice, Michelle, the um, I know you enjoy zoning, so I think you're gonna have fun uh with Ian and the zoning board. So let us move on to approval of our minutes, item number five. Five A is consideration of the minutes from the January 6th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any uh comments, edits, changes from commissioners on that?
Just Commissioner Foster, just as a comment, um I do appreciate the new approach, the minutes um certainly makes it easier to review. So I think that was done well and um I'd also make a motion to approve as presented.
A comment from Commissioner Hagvors. Yeah, the new format was a lot easier to review. The only um concern that I had is I didn't see any comments from commissioners in there. So like with regards to the conversations about renderings or crosswalks or anything like that, there was no discussion in that for the developer to look back on. So I almost would ask if there could be a small kind of like overview and say a commissioner discussed why. It doesn't have to go into as much detail as the previous minutes did, but just something so that way we can go back and see kind of who said what and what kind of guidance was given.
Thanks, Commissioner Hagvors. Before we get back to the motion on the table, a question for the city clerk, since this is the first time that we're uh changing our minutes format. Is it in keeping with the new format to add the type of notes that Commissioner Hagvors has requested? Or do you need some additional details?
Um, it, so the new format was was implemented after discussion with uh Ferndale City Clerk Marnie McGrath. As well as um the other city staff and Erin, Jordan Porthy. The format that off from the last meeting of the Commission is essentially identical to the format you would see when you review minutes for City Council. And that's really why it was implemented the way it was as um, you know, much sparser in terms of types of content than had previously been the case for this commission. That was done in part based on the knowledge that we are now recording Planning Commission meetings. And so there is always a, the the city's intent anyway, and Justin, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the intent is that there is a publicly accessible recording of each meeting in conjunction with the minutes in the agenda packet. So that anyone wishing to review the content of how the meeting itself did play out and hear those conversations can actually hear the conversations themselves.
And I think if I could just chime in as well, um Erin and I are both, you know, with every meeting taking pretty copious notes, I'd say. So we can uh, we always give kind of a summary to the applicants afterward of, you know, feedback we had and stuff like that. So we we have that as historical backup too. So I'd kind of rely on those more um than the detailed minutes as before, but um it's something we can talk about and follow up with at next meeting as well.
Thanks, Justin. Commissioner Hagvors, if if you'd like, um if you would like some things added to to the minutes, um uh I I guess I'd welcome a second on Commissioner Foster's motion. And then perhaps um you could suggest an amendment um or if the answer was satisfactory. Your 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 floor.
Yeah, I guess just so, just to follow up confirmation, so the audio recordings, obviously right now on Zoom and then eventually when we go back in person. All those audio recordings are available on the city's website for any resident to go back also to check through, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, then that follow-up information that does, I think, suffice with enough information. So I'll actually then second the minutes as drafted currently.
Thank you, we've got a motion from Commissioner Foster with a second from Commissioner Hagvors to accept the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion?
From Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Yeah, I was I was also thinking about uh the level of detail in the minutes. For instance, in the call to audience, Mike Flores's comments, I remember specifically him mentioning like the opportunity for including public art in new development. Um, I I thought maybe that could be reflected in the minutes, so like a little bit more specific.
Uh, City Clerk, is that, is the answer to that question sort of similar to what we just talked about? That the the detailed items would be available in the recording, but not the minutes? I know this is a, this is a new format, so I just want to make sure we're all clear on it.
The idea, um, you know, we're we're trying to find the best balance to strike. We wanted to uh when we're commenting, whether that's call to audience or a a public hearing, um anything like that where we're openly soliciting input from the public. We did want to keep a record of who spoke and at least uh as you saw, a a sentence about the topic of what they spoke about. Um, so that was something that staff considered as we uh as we planned out this shift in minutes format. If I uh if if I did not fully summarize each topic that a uh an audience member touches on during their public speaking. Then um I I would say I'll do my best to include each topic that uh an audience member might touch on. And and should I miss one, that is why we have an audio recording. But um, thank you, Commissioner Braga, I will uh, I've noted the Commission's interest in in at least a brief annotation of each topic. An audience member might touch on. And I'll do my best to include each of those.
Thank you, City Clerk. Additional discussion on the motion? This is a, this is a big change, but it should get us minutes faster um and utilize the technology, you know, rather than sort of duplicating with a full transcription of something that's already recorded. Use our technology a little bit better. Justin, do you have something to add?
Through the Chair, just just uh one thing that I forgot at the beginning of the meeting, um that it, with this uh potential vote. If the commissioners could also um say their location of where they're at, um along with their name, uh that just the city um and state is fine. That's part of the new COVID-19 Open Meetings Act amendment, so just want to make sure that that's uh noted in the minutes.
Thanks, uh, City Clerk, uh, is it all right if we say that on this vote or do you want us to go back and clarify anything?
Uh, no, including it on this vote is fine.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this is Commissioner Foster, I just have another um uh discussion item or request that um within the minutes is a. It's on, it's, I would assume that this is the method that you're using across the board. But um when we discuss motions, um we just mention what's in the packet. And it might just be easier for reference to actually include the motion within the minutes rather than referencing the agenda packet. But that would be a personal preference.
Oh, I think that makes a lot of sense if if that's, if we have the ability to do that in the future. Jordan, sorry, City Clerk.
Yes, absolutely, I'm I'm sorry, my impression was that the published minutes did have the full language of the motion that had been made as referenced from the package. So if they don't, it's unintentional and we will get that corrected.
Okay, thank you. Can I make a friendly?
The full language of.
Yeah, did you want to, did you want to amend your motion, Commissioner Foster?
Yeah, friendly amendment if um possible to um revise the minutes as provided to include the full motion. From the back end.
Thank you, do you accept that amendment, Commissioner Hagvors?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, any other discussion on this item?
Yes, Commissioner Shalater.
Commissioner Shalater, yep.
I was looking at um, is the link that is in under call to au- audience supposed to be a link that works? The seam dot L Y link?
Um, through the Chair, I have, it is now, we updated that, shoot, it's the same document, but we did change the web address to make it say, just something let more legible. So we can update the minutes with it's uh the link that I put in the uh the chat here to try and um if people want to sign up. So it's ferndalemid dot seamless docs dot com um F slash Planning Commission through our city website. So we can update that in the minutes, absolutely.
Commissioner Foster, um so I'll update my motion with a friendly amendment to update the link. But then I would just also ask you to resend that in the chat because actually I'm not showing it in my chat, so.
Yep, I don't see it in my chat either.
I'll support that updated motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagvors. All right, additional discussion on this item? If not, we will have a uh vote when our clerk is ready or if you want us to restate any of those amendments, clerk?
Nope, I've got all the amendments, thank you, Chair Baker.
Thank you.
All right, uh, this is a roll call vote and as a reminder, please state the city that you are currently in. Uh, if it's not in the state of Michigan, give us the state as well, please.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Azar, Ferndale.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes, Commissioner Braga, Ferndale.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes, Commissioner Brazen, Ferndale.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes, Commissioner Foster, Ferndale.
Commissioner Hagvors.
Yes, Commissioner Hagvors, Ferndale.
Commissioner Haskew.
Is absent.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed from earlier. Thank you, uh, Councilman Polica.
Yes, Councilman Polica, Ferndale, Michigan.
Commissioner Shalater.
Yes, Commissioner Shalater, Ferndale.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, Chair Baker, Royal Oak. All right. Our next item, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, for going through that exercise with us. Um, our next item is call to audience. This is a time for members of the audience to address the Planning Commission on anything that's not on tonight's agenda. As a reminder, uh, we have one action item and one discussion item on tonight's agenda. The action item is the considerate, is a public hearing considering a planned unit development at 5:03 East Nine Mile. We then have a discussion item about uh, we're creating a list of potential ordinance amendments. When we get to those items, there will be a chance for uh questions and comments from the public. But right now, um, if there's anyone here from the public who wants to address the Planning Com- Commission on anything other than those two items. Uh, you've got three minutes, please raise your hand and state your name and location uh for the record. Is there anyone who would like to speak at call to audience on anything that is not on tonight's agenda?
I'm raising my hand. Oh, sorry, okay, hello, I guess we do have one. So we have, of course, Mike Flores.
Welcome, Mike. Can you hear me, Mike?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, sorry about that, I'm driving. Um, just a quick comment in regards to to um the video recording. Um, so I know that when city council videos are recorded, there's usually a link from the Ferndale um um city government website to that video recording. And I noticed that for the Penning Commission, there isn't a link from the city website to the YouTube videos. So I wonder if there's like, if the link can either be added on the Ferndale website or if that link can be added to the business minutes. Um, just because I know that uh um recently, there's been a lot of attention on the Planning Commission. And I always want to tell people. um, recently there's been a lot of attention on the planning commission, and I always want to tell people, hey, go see the video if you, if you weren't able to attend, just so people can see, um, what the members of, of the pending commissioner, what their thought processes and why certain things are being approved. Um, so if, if that could be done, so we can connect all the dots in terms of where all, where all the information is available, I think that would be, um, positively, um, um, uh, um, um, received by the community. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Any other, thank you. Any other questions or comments at call to audience at this time on items that are not on the agenda?
We do not have any, um, hand raised, um, at this time, but we do have a call-in number with the last three digits, three, four, three. So if that individual is here and would like to make any comments, um, they can do so now.
All right. Okay, not hearing or seeing any other comments for call to audience. Thanks, Erin. Uh, we will. I do not know the answer to, uh, Mike's question, so, uh, I will let the city clerk, um, advise us on that one, um, at our next meeting. Obviously, we're working out, um, a new minutes process. So, City Clerk, if you can give us an update at the next meeting about recordings and, you know, video is not how we've typically done things. It's been voiced, so, uh, maybe, um, what will be available and when and where, um, that would be helpful. Thank you. I, I try not to say Jordan because often we have two Jordans at this meeting. So thank you, Jordan. All right, our next item is, um, our only business item, or only, I'm sorry, only action item this evening is the consideration of a planned unit development at five zero three East Nine Mile. Uh, we will have a public hearing on this item. Uh, so what we'll do first is we will have an introduction from our city staff. We'll then have, um, a presentation from the applicant, uh, to share information on the project. Then I will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to ask questions, um, state an opinion, make a comment, uh, related to, uh, this particular project, uh, you are welcome to at that time. Uh, you'll have three minutes to state your name, um, and address, um, and location, I guess, for the record. Uh, but first, we will, I'm sorry, and then I'll close the public hearing. Uh, we'll work through all of those questions and comments to try to get some answers. Um, and then the planning commission will deliberate. So we will start with an introduction from our city staff.
Thank you. This is Erin Patel. Um, this is sustainability planner, um, and lead on this project, um, from staff. Uh, so the proposed planned unit development project includes three properties, uh, the five oh three East Nine Mile. It's zoned, uh, C two commercial, four ten Vestor Street and four fourteen Vestor Street, which are both zoned, um, R three res- our residential. And I think I misspoke, C two commercial, R three residential. Uh, this project is seeking state and local incentives, um, through the payment and move taxes program and through the state and will be reviewed and voted on separately. So tonight we're going to be reviewing the planned unit development and the site plan. Um, but there is, there are, um, the applicant is seeking incentives and if approved this evening, um, would then be part of the, um, review at city council. Uh, the project team is Full Circle Communities. It's based out of Chicago. Uh, this organization focuses on affordable housing developments and with a particular interest in supporting the LGBTQ plus community in Ferndale for this project. Um, they met with planning commission at the December second, twenty twenty meeting and presented the preliminary P U D application at that time. The planning commission staff and community members provide feedback and, um, the project was given direction to proceed with a formal P U D application. The project team has since reached out to several community organizations and held at least two community meetings to gather feedback on the plans. Uh, the overall development means a number of goals and recommendations in the twenty seventeen Ferndale master plan, including diversification of housing types, long-term affordable housing, pedestrian and transit oriented development and sustainable building design. The development proposes a mix of one and two bedroom units for a total of fifty-three units. And the maximum height of the building is forty-five, or forty-seven feet with, um, a fifty-two foot parapet and the gross square footage is over fifty thousand, uh, square feet. And, um, a little bit more detail on, um, this particular, uh, site. So it's located at the corner of Paxton and, uh, East Nine Mile. Um, where, if you're familiar, it's where the former, um, Blooms location was, uh, was located. And, um, when we review this, we look, um, with planning unit developments, um, it's a special type of review process that is considered for projects, um, that don't necessarily fit our traditional zoning or underlying zoning. And what we do for a planned unit development is there's, um, specific criteria in place that we review the projects that come through. One of the things of note is that the, um, the applicant, as part of the P U D, um, program, um, there's a variety of community benefits. We have twelve of those benefits that we have and is part of our ordinance, and they have an intent to, um, meet eight of them. And those eight include the following. A complimentary mixture of uses, sustainable building and site design, open space, greenways to link the adjacent greenway corridors, provision of affordable housing, diversification of housing types, um, pedestrian transit oriented development, coordinated development of multiple ascended parcels, assembled parcels and removal or renovation of bladed buildings or sites, um, or cleanup of the contamination. And this is, um, a contaminated site which would have, um, some remediation on site as well. Um, with the P, with, you know, common with these types of applications, there are, um, several different deviations, um, in this project. And I'll quickly go through those, um, and then the applicant can provide more information on those deviations. Um, what these deviations are, sort of even deviations from the R three as well as the C two. Um, and within that as well, they provided some, um, additional comments about, um, parking agreements that they have because, um, they are, have a deviation of parking, which includes vehicle parking, a deviation for E V stations, deviation for bike parking. So those are all, um, coordinated in the parking. They have a little bit higher density than what is, um, traditionally allowed for in R three. Um, they have, uh, parking setbacks, uh, that are a little bit different. They have, um, overall setbacks, maximum heights, which is a deviation, um, from R three, but not from C two. And, um, some deviation from the building, um, materials based on our, uh, guidelines for architectural compatibility. And, um, I believe there was another note. Oh, the other note that I wanted to make about this was that we did consider the urban flex, um, part of the CBD ordinance, even though this technically isn't urban flex because it is adjacent to this property and development, potential development. And so we use that as a guide to keep in considerations for the site plan review with staff. Um, and then finally, as part of the, um, this whole planned unit development process, there is a formal, what's called a plan unit development agreement. It is an agreement that is set forth in place, a legal document that has parameters around when the development will occur and certain items, um, that are related to the project, such as those community benefits, um, or other items. And the applicant, um, will probably, uh, speak more to what is in, in that, um, agreement. Um, all of those are weighed in on and, um, officially approved by city council if recommended for approval tonight from planning commission. And, um, that would be the body that would weigh in on additional items for that, um, particular planning development agreement. And with all of that, I would now like to welcome the applicant to make any additional comments. I will, um, like to say as well that if at any time throughout this, um, you would like to see some of the renderings or any of the site plan design or anything like that, I'm happy to share my screen. Just let me know. I have it pulled up already. And, um, with that, if the applicants would like to, um, talk a little bit more detail about the project and then about, um, some of the other, uh, aspects of the project, they are welcome to do so right now.
Thanks, Erin. Um, I want to share my screen real quick, I think. Yeah, Justin assigned me as the co-host. All right, can everyone see, uh, my PDF on the screen? Okay, I see some heads ups. So, uh, just quick introduction. My name's James Dowell, project manager with Full Circle Communities. Uh, you know, before I jump in, I'd like to thank everyone from Ferndale, uh, for taking the time of their evening to, to join us and to join the previous meetings that we've held about this project. Um, so, you know, the need for age-friendly, LGBTQ-friendly and affordable housing is greater than ever. It's been due to aging baby lower population and, you know, economic disparity, all of which has been compounded by COVID. You know, decades of unemployment, segregation, marriage inequality have led to higher rates of economic insecurity for LGBTQ adults. And in the past, the same population has been more than likely to face housing discrimination when it comes to finding safe, quality, affordable housing. So over the last few years, there's been, I want to quite call it a trend, but there have been a few LGBTQ-friendly affordable housing residences that have been popping up in larger cities like San Francisco, uh, Philadelphia, Los Angeles, and then even in Chicago, which we've studied in crafting the development plan for this project. Currently, there's around twelve, uh, developments that are geared towards a specific population and, you know, we're excited by the prospect to, to add Ferndale to this growing list. So this project got started over three years ago when our team started working with various LGBTQ stakeholders looking for a site for a project like this. And that's evolved into a multi-year process with the city staff, coming up with a project idea that fits the community of Ferndale well and would help address some of the issues outlined in the city's master plan and inclusive housing plan. And we think while we're presenting today, you know, does just that. So back in October, this project was informally introduced to plan commission for discussion. And then, um, in the December plant commission meeting, we presented our pre-plan new development application. And then as, as Erin had mentioned earlier this month, we met twice with Ferndale residents to address some of the concerns that we've heard, uh, as part of those meetings and then just provide community residents and community stakeholders, other opportunities to answer questions that they might have in anticipation of this meeting. So over the course of the next couple of slides, I'll talk about some of the feedback we've received, how we've addressed it, um, and incorporate some of that feedback into the programming for this project. Uh, so you heard Erin talk a little bit about project specifics around our P U D application. I'll, I'll delve in a little bit later around some of the deviations we're looking for. But I thought it might be helpful if we talked a bit about who we are at full circle, since we've talked a lot in the past about the programming for the project. So we are a five oh one C three nonprofit where supportive services and supporting residents are a key component to all of our projects. And to achieve this, we dedicate seventy-five percent of all of our economics to pay for services for residents who live at our developments. And so what this means for a project like this and what residents can expect out of us once this project is built is that over the project lifecycle, we project about a hundred thousand dollars each year will be dedicated to fund supportive services and a case coordinator at this project. We're working with several general, you know, general service providers like Community Housing Network, and then also engaging several LGBTQ-specific service organizations like Affirmations, Sage, Metropolitan Community Church of Detroit, to bring population-specific services to this development. And what, you know, what it means to have full circle as part of this project is that we're the long-term owners of all of our projects. So we're really invested in the long-term success of these developments and being good neighbors, you know, not just from the services side of things, but also we're really vested in having a well-built durable building, uh, you know, will positively impact a community for year to come, or for years to come. So as noted by Erin earlier, uh, this P U D meets eight substantial benefits outlined, uh, in the municipal code. So I just want to take a few minutes to focus on the impact that this project will have because a lot of them, uh, relate to how our development would impact the broader Ferndale community. So in previous meetings, we had heard from city staff and community residents that green space is something that's centrally important to residents of Ferndale. So, you know, part of to address this, our P U D and site plan includes an approximately three thousand square foot open space at the corner of Festor and Paxton that consists of a large patio, uh, made of plant gardens. Other substantial benefits. So the Ferndale master plan noted that there was, you know, identified a longing for increased residential units and options near downtown Ferndale, but that offerings were still limited. And in addition, that there was a substantial need for housing geared towards, um, elderly residents. And so this development's mix of affordable one and two-bedroom units targeted towards LGBTQ elders provides a housing type that meets this need. This project has a pedestrian-friendly designs with activated ground floor space along Nine Mile. In addition, a few other ones. So, you know, this is a seventeen million dollar project that's going to have a forty-five year affordability period with a hundred percent of the unit set aside for households earning below sixty percent area median income. And I could go through some specifics in a little bit about what area median income's in and how it impacts the rental rates for this project. But the affordability for this project is going to be assured by a deed restriction that runs with the land of this development. So meaning that affordability continues at this project, you know, even in the event that ownership were to change, if full circle were to go away, there's a restriction that runs with this project to ensure long-term affordability. And it's really meaningful. Right now, data shows that twenty percent of the households who live in Ferndale are cost burdens, meaning that they pay over thirty percent of their income each month towards housing. And so a project with a forty-five year affordability period could go a long way to help address this issue and help mitigate some of the impacts that a lot of the higher-end residential developments have on rising housing costs in the community. Another, you know, substantial community benefit is the community meeting hub, which is a pretty cool community gear benefit of this project. It's a sixteen hundred square foot space designed to serve the residents of Ferndale, not just, um, those living at our development. You said this space is going to be provided at no cost to the community. So we've engaged several local and national organizations about coming to the site and offering programming at the space like Metropolitan Community Church of Detroit, Affirmations, Ferndale Housing Commission, Community Housing Network, Sage, and then, um, a few other healthcare-focused organizations. So, you know, a space like this is really geared towards providing positive impact to the larger Ferndale community. Last but not least, this project's pretty high-tech in terms of sustainability and being environmentally friendly. So at the minimum, the building is going to be lead certified or lead silver or equivalent certified. The rooftop's designed to accommodate the installation of solar panels. Landscaping's going to consist of native plants. Parking lot will have E V charging stations. Units will have energy star appliances and water conserving fixtures to lessen the impact that development has in the environment. And as Erin mentioned earlier, we're doing a pretty hefty amount of environmental cleanup at this site at a cost of around three hundred thousand dollars to remove, uh, what we know so far, four underground storage tanks, five thousand tons of hazardous soil, and installing a vapor mitigation system to improve the indoor air quality at the development. Um, I'll take a sip of water. I just wanted to address, uh, stormwater management real quick because this is something that we heard a lot at the kind of two focused meetings that we held with the community. Um, and, and talking with the civil engineering team, this project is a substantial improvement over the stormwater management that's currently at the site. So the site currently doesn't have any underground stormwater detention like is proposed for this project. So it'll significantly reduce the amount of runoff and impact to the municipal service system and is actually even superior to water control that just, you know, just where a vacant grass lot, what that would offer. So as Erin mentioned, you know, this is a fifty-three unit development. It's a mix of one-bedroom units, forty-one one-bedroom units and twelve two-bedroom apartments. And it's something that we're calling age-friendly housing. So age-friendly means that in addition to a portion of our units being barrier-free, that a hundred percent of the units in this development are, um, designed to be fully adaptable. So meaning at any time, if one of our residents, um, has, uh, you know, develops a physical disability, that we can make changes to the unit. And this is pretty unique, even at affordable housing projects. And it means that once residents move in, that they're going to be allowed to age in place. And if they need adjustments, we can make those. And it's going to allow them to stay, you know, at their home. And that means that they won't have to seek out other housing opportunities or move out of the community. Another, you know, I guess a, a change from previous plant commission meetings is the name for the project. So coming up with names for developments can be difficult and developers tend not to be very creative or, you know, just not very good at coming up with names. So we met with the community advocates that we've been working with over the years to come up with this project and let them come up with a name. So, uh, as Aaron mentioned, the project's name, new name is Raymond E. Shepherd House. And Raymond Shepherd was a longtime LGBTQ ally, Ferndale resident. He was a US Air Force veteran who passed away back in in 2018. So this project has been named on his behalf. So affordability, I think a big component of our community benefit is the 45-year affordability period. So what does that look like when we use that word? For a single-person household, that means they could have a maximum of income of $33,000 to qualify, income qualify for unit development. And by de facto, you know, everyone who's under that income also income qualifies. They could expect to pay a rental range of $441 to $883, depending on their annual income. And for two-bedroom households, we could accommodate income ranges up to just below $38,000 with rental ranges at 441 if they wanted to rent a one-bedroom unit or up to 1060 for a two-bedroom unit. And pretty unique to Full Circle's development model. And we use it as a means to ensure affordability is that these rental rates are for all utilities included. So water, hot water, heating, cooling, all that's covered by the rest by the rent here. And residents don't have to worry about paying utility companies. We've heard in previous, I think the previous plant commission meeting comments regarding affordability and what what our rental rates look like. So we commissioned a third-party company to look at what our kind of rental discount looks like compared to other brand-new developments that have come online in the market area. And what this study found is that the rents we're looking to charge at this development are anywhere from a 43% to 72% discount from comparable market rate developments, charging anywhere from $1,500 for a one-bedroom unit or, you know, 1,800 for a two-bedroom unit. In addition, as we look to kind of deepen affordability here, we'll applying and hopefully we'll have 27 project-based vouchers for this development, meaning, you know, not just affordable for folks making $33,000. It means that community residents who may be retired and on social security, those who might have a disability or an SSDI are all eligible and can income qualify and can afford their rent at this development. Another thing we heard a lot at the pre-PUD meeting and in our kind of earlier community risk, community meetings was resident concerns about traffic and safety. So I wanted to just show the site plan again, real quick, as we we've made some adjustments. Previously, we had shown a site plan that included a north access to the parking lot off of Vester. And listening to the community feedback concerns about vehicular traffic on this residential street and kids playing in the street, we re-oriented the parking lot to get all the traffic off of residential streets, preserve the green space in an effort to kind of mitigate as much traffic as possible. So now you'll see on our site plan, the only entrance to the parking lot is in and out off of the commercial street, Nine Mile. Parking is another concern that we heard a lot about and is a place where we're seeking a deviation for our plan unit development. What the data tells us for projects that are owned and operated by Full Circle, over a dozen of them, is that we consistently provide too much parking in the form of big asphalt lots that are ever fully utilized and really have a negative impact on stormwater management. Our, you know, our data across our portfolio shows that on the high end about, well, on average, 41% of the number of available spots at one time get utilized and really only 25% of the households utilize our onsite parking. And, you know, we thinking about what the, you know, reasons behind this might be is that the reality for car ownership isn't that attainable for low-income households or residents who are on fixed income. The average car insurance rate in Michigan is like $3,000 a year, it's twice the national average. You include high insurance costs with maintenance costs, repairs you have to make, annual food, you know, fuel costs, and you're looking at $4,000 a year in car ownership costs before you've even included, you know, a lease or loan payment. So I think that can help provide some context on why the parking utilization rates at our developments, which are all low-income housing developments, you know, why they look so low. And I guess maybe surprising to to some residents. In addition, you know, there are a lot of good public transit opportunities offered by the site. So we talked with Smart earlier after the pre-plan unit development meeting. And an addition that we'll make to the development agreement is that we love the idea of relocating the Smart Bus Stop right in front of this development. Right now, it's in front of the CVS and relocating it to the front of this development will allow for an approved transit facility like a bench because right now there there's just a sign which will make the bus a more attractive option. The site also has benefit of, you know, Smart's other transit options that they offer. So smart connector service for planned rides within the city of Ferndale. Smart transportation services, which is similar to connector service, but covers outside of Ferndale as well. They have a pair of transit services. So that can be really useful for residents at this development who might have a physical disability. In addition, you know, there are more than a handful of ride-share services offered. So we think all of these things combined really reduce the need for car ownership and the need for parking spots. And so reiterating that, we think our data shows that we have a significant number of onsite parking spots. We've been in a few conversations with the owner of the CVS who, I'll go back to the site plan real quick. But CVS owns this this lot here, if you could see my cursor, which is only accessible through our parking lot. So they have agreed to lease additional spots to us for use by our residents in the event that we need it. So that was one of the shared parking agreements that Aaron had mentioned earlier. In addition, if additional parking is needed for when we hold events at the community meeting hub, which might have, you know, more of a draw to the larger Ferndale community, we've included two, you know, shared parking options with two nearby business owners. Blooms and Incubuso to open, who are open to providing spots if, you know, parking really does become an issue. Other kind of deviations that we're making that, you know, Aaron had mentioned, we're seeking a deviation for number of EV spots. I believe the code requirement is 10%. So we're, you know, based on the number of required spots, we would need to include six. We're proposing to include three EV charging ports at this at the site, since our, you know, our lot is only going to be for use by low-income or by residents of our development and the high cost of electrical vehicle ownership at this time. We don't anticipate a high demand for that, but they're going to be included at the site in case demand does, you know. We know things are moving that way. So there will be options if needed. And then bike parking, Aaron had mentioned, we're seeking a deviation on just because we're targeting an elderly population. In our design, we had looked at more of a wall-mounted system for bike storage, which we could accommodate pretty close to the number of required bike parking spots. But we think that serves as a little bit of a health hazard to have elderly residents, you know, picking up and loading bikes onto a wall instead of just being stored, you know, like we typically see it on the ground. Here's a just a quick rendering, as Aaron mentioned earlier. I'll leave it on here for for a couple of minutes. But just, you know, in closing, the need for affordable housing in Ferndale is greater than ever. And it's only growing due to economic pressures from COVID and increasing income inequality. You know, the Inclusive Housing Action Plan noted that housing options that are considered affordable to low-income households decreased by almost 10% between 2012 and 2017. And we know that rising housing costs from numerous market rate developments certainly hasn't helped, you know, make this any easier. So we really think this project will have a positive impact on the Ferndale community and you know, I guess, in summary, I'd really like to thank the residents and community advocates of Ferndale for allowing us to engage with them over, you know, last years, but really in high intensity over the last months and providing feedback that we were able to incorporate into the design of this project. I'd like to thank the plant commission for considering our request for for this plan new development. And then lastly, but not least, to Aaron, Justin and Jordan at the city who worked really hard and worked really closely with us over the last couple of months to to get us to today. So with with that, I'll turn control back over to to Justin.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Aaron. Thanks, James. And is there anyone else from, James, was was that it from Full Circle at this time?
Yeah, that was it. I may have folks pop in if some specific questions come up, but I think Ross is from the developer side right now.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, then, we will open the, all right, let me just real quick repeat our guidelines for the public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing to consider the planned unit development at 503 East Nine Mile. Anyone who would like to offer a comment, ask a question, make a statement about this planned unit development is welcome to do so. Please, if you are using the video conferencing, if you're using Zoom, use the raise your hand feature. If you are on the phone, our city staff will be sure to, after we get through the people who are video conferencing, will be sure to call on you by your phone number to give you a chance to comment. We will work through all of the comments and questions in the public hearing. Then I'll close the public hearing and we'll work to get answers from the applicant. So with that, I will open the public hearing for the consideration of a planned unit development at 503 East Nine Mile at 7:31 PM. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, state your name and location for the record. You've got three minutes. And Aaron will help me recognize commenters.
Yeah. So the first person with their hand raised is Carmen Garcia.
Welcome, Carmen.
Thank you. Carmen Garcia, 1850 Central Street, Ferndale. This is really exciting, really, really exciting. And I support the Raymond Shepherd Housing Development because there's a need, as James said, for affordable housing for seniors in Ferndale. And and this offers seniors who've lived in Ferndale, made life here, participated in the community, an option to stay in Ferndale. Well, you know, I'm going to say we because I'm, you know, I'm a baby boomer. So so we would like, you know, the option of staying in familiar area and aging in place is very, very attractive. And I also believe that there's value in having multiple generations contribute to the diversity of of our community. So big thumbs up to everyone who's worked on this and so grateful that the city of Ferndale and and everyone connected has been, you know, so open to this. Thank you.
Thanks, Carmen.
All right. The next person with their hand raised is CJ Felton.
Welcome, CJ.
Hey, Kate, how are you?
I am well. So Community Housing Network is in the room tonight. Welcome.
We're in the room tonight. Thank you so much. My name is CJ Felton. I'm Director of Real Estate Development with Community Housing Network. It is so, there are a lot of friends on this call tonight, which is really fun. We've been talking with Ferndale for several years. Full Circle Communities approached us in October about working together on this development. We are going to be the supportive services provider. We do this in multiple communities across Southeast Michigan. I believe we know how to do it very well and do it very effectively. And you have chosen a great group to work with in Full Circle. Can't tell you Carl and James and members of the team and our team have been on the phone many, many times and they really know how to do this well. And we're super excited to work on this together. I think it's very needed that I think we all know the need for affordable housing right now is extreme throughout our entire region and maybe about to become much more so depending on what happens with eviction, prevention, and, you know, various other things related to the pandemic over the next several months. Thank you very much for your consideration of the project. And if anybody has any questions about our role while we're here tonight, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, CJ. Would you state your location for the record?
Oh, yes. 24581 Creekside Drive in Farmington Hills.
Thank you very much.
So the next hand is Kate Latach.
Welcome, Cat.
I'm sorry, Cat Latach. I apologize.
Great. Thank you so much. Really pleased to be here tonight and have a chance to review the plans. That was a great presentation. And so I'm, I am Cat Latach. I live at 715 West Breckenridge in Ferndale. I've lived in Ferndale since 1992 and three different quadrants of the city. And I wanted to share some additional information for context of the planning committee, planning commission tonight. I've worked or volunteered in aging services for the past 14 years and in LGBTQ services for over 30 years, volunteered partly. I also serve on the Board of Sage Metro Detroit, which is one of the organizations that would be a community partner and provide services to the residents of this building. And, you know, I'm really excited to see this come to fruition. It was about 14 years ago at a meeting at Affirmations where I used to work, where we convened a meeting of LGBTQ older adults. Nearly 100 people showed up and it was the first time ever that we ever had a conversation about this. And up to that time, there were no specific services available to serve LGBTQ older adults. And the number one concern they cited was housing. And it was such a big heavy lift that we, community organizers knew as we were headed into recession at the time, it was 2007, that we wouldn't be able to do anything on housing. So this is really exciting. And I also want to share a personal story. I still remember the day one of our regular members at Affirmations called me up and said, Cat, I'm moving into a retirement community and I'm going back into the closet. I don't want them or anyone else to know I'm a lesbian. Please don't call me anymore or send mail to my apartment. That was about 12 years ago. She moved. She severed all relationships with her community. And she passed away just about three years ago now. And I don't want that as a future for the LGBTQ older adults that live in our communities today. And in fact, you know, Ferndale has made clear its commitment to anti-racism and all forms of discrimination and disparate treatment very recently. So this project really is a great fit for Ferndale. I'm super excited about it. Creating affordable housing has really helped to reduce those inequities. We also know that Ferndale is an attractive community. A lot of people want to live here and it's those very people, those creative types, those artistic types, our LGBTQ people who helped make Ferndale what it is today. So I love to see a place and a space that's safe for our elders to live. And it's not just for LGBTQ older adults. We know that all of our seniors need to need spaces to age safely in place. So very excited about this project. And I understand that there are challenges with any project. And I I hope that the city can work through those challenges to provide this space. And I know Sage is really looking forward to helping to provide a supportive atmosphere to the residents that live there. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Cat.
All right. The next person in line is Paul Cullum.
Welcome, Paul. You are muted, Paul. There we go.
Good evening. My wife and I are actually going to speak as well, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Angela, you go first.
My name is Angela Lepard and I'm a resident of 634 East Breckenridge in Ferndale. I live right in the area of where the building is being built. I just wanted to say that I'm thankful to Full Circle for the time that they've spent with us, both in answering questions via email as well as Zoom meetings and adjusting the Zoom meetings for our needs. So I I appreciate how upfront they've been about everything. I also find this project very personal as far as I've worked with older adults for 18 years, including 14 years at the local area agency on aging. And then I also have a close relationship with the local LGBT community through faith communities and and other relationships. And I can definitely speak to the need of the need for affordable housing, but also the need for affordable housing in LGBT-friendly communities. So I have a lot of friends that live in Warner, other places because it's affordable, but they don't necessarily live in a a community that's a community that's accepting of them. So I I wanted to make clear that I I support this project wholeheartedly and heartedly. I I just wanted to put out there, though, that, you know, as a resident, I I do have concerns about parking as always. I would just say I put this out to the Planning Commission that as for those of us that are stuck between, I don't want to say stuck, living between nine and Camborn, Paxton, and Burdette, we're a very unique community. And we are very highly impacted by a lot of the projects that have been coming up. And there is a feeling that we're being pushed out a little bit between plans from other organizations, parking where like parking was planned like in front of our lot or in front of our driveway. I just think it's important that I think these are the type of projects that we should be supporting and that going forward, we consider stepping back on the PUDs and the other things within this very small area. So I support this project. It's needed. I I it's close to my heart for several different reasons, but this is also my home. And I just want to make sure that anything else built in this area or built up in this area takes into consideration the people that live here. So that was it for me.
Thanks, Angela. Welcome, Paul.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing the opportunity to address this project. Really liked the project. Full Circle has been great with the communication back and forth and responding to emails. And talking to some neighbors, really, the only concern is we we have is is parking. It's kind of a situation that I I I won't say it's unique to our area, but we we are bounded by the railroad tracks. And when the train goes by, there are some influences on that. And we do have quite a few houses on Vester, Rosewood, Amberdett that do not have driveways. So, you know, when I hear and talk to my residents and they're asking me about this project, that is basically their main concern. Everybody supports a project. They like the project to happen. But again, that that is kind of the concern. And for me, I I think I would be a little more satisfied, I guess, with a little bit better parking agreement. I I just want to refer to the Incubuzo Agreement. This commission has already approved, I think, two phases for the Vester Street, the Vester Square Project. And the third phase is curtailed because of parking, because they had their plans were needed such a quite a variance for parking. I I guess to make it a little bit better for this project, I I noticed in the agreement, it just says that they can use parking spaces after normal business hours. And there is actually not a a commitment to a number of spaces. And then my only other concern is that it stated in there that the this agreement reserves the right to termination at any time without cause or penalty. So I mean, that is kind of an issue for me. I I I just would feel better if there was an actual commitment to a number of spaces and some sort of timeframe that maybe, and I it would be amenable if they said, well, even if it was a three-year plan, and then after two years, we can kind of look at it and kind of re review it, I guess, and see if that's really necessary or not. But I mean, I I I do have a concern about not having a a fixed number of spots and an actual timeframe involved for the parking agreement. But I I do want to say this project is really, really needed. We have friends that are being forced to move from their community because they cannot stay due to rent or pricing of the housing. And so we really, really hope this comes to fruition and make everybody happy. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Angela.
All right, the next person in line is Sarah Jordan.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to start by saying thank you to First Full Circle for listening to the concerns of the neighbors for the building. I also, oh, I'm sorry, you needed my address. I'm four thirteen Vester. So this will actually be the view out my front window. So this really affects me and my family. I really appreciate them changing the parking. That was a huge concern. I have two small children, and there's ten children on this block that play in the front yards, including the yards of the homes that will be taken down. So that's that's a little disheartening there. Although we're happy to see that there'll be some green space out in front. I have more practical questions for me as an adjacent property owner. As far as the purpose of this building, I I fully support that. It's just the the practical day-to-day things that I, as a homeowner, will have to be dealing with. They they keep talking about cleaning up contamination. I'm curious as to what is this contamination and why don't I know about it? Because if that property is contaminated, what's going on my property? The second thing is I know they said that what they would be doing for sewage would be better than the runoff from the current buildings there. However, I talked to D P W when I went to find out some more information about the lead problems we're having. And they said that there was no current plan to redo any of the sewers in the area, even with this project. Now, obviously, they'd have to do what they needed for that building, but if it's tying into the current sewer system, we've had sewage backups, not just myself, multiple people in this area. I've had them twice and had to gut my entire basement twice, well over thirty thousand dollars worth of damage. So to put that extra strain on a sewer system that's not really doing what it should be, that really concerns me. Also, again, as everybody else has said, the parking. I understand, and I've been to a few of the meetings they've had. Unfortunately, the times aren't always great for me. But it sounded like many of the developments were in the Chicago area, which is known for excellent public transportation. And I'm just wondering if they have any statistics for low-income housing in Detroit? Because I really think Detroit's a little bit different. I think people will spend five hundred dollars on a beater and duct tape the the tailpipe on and keep going here. I know they're close to the, you know, it's walkability to downtown and the smart bus stops and all of that. But especially if you have two people in a one-bedroom apartment or two different family members in in the two bedrooms, I think that it's more probable in Metro Detroit for at least one of those people to find a way to make a car happen. So I'm still concerned about the parking. I know we talked about the parking that's at Autumn House, which is very close by as well. However, the street behind them is a dead-end street, and there's parking allowed on both sides of the street. And that street, the part right behind Autumn House, is always full. So I'm assuming that some of those are residents using that the street parking as opposed to the parking lot, because I know they don't have a lot of parking. So I'm concerned about that. We only on the part of Vester that I live on, there's only parking on one side of the street. And ever since, we've had the restaurants at the end of the street and businesses, and now the new four oh nine. It's packed. I mean, I often can't find a spot in front of my own home. So I'm concerned, especially when the community space is being used, what will go for parking? I'm really hoping they don't put parking on both sides of the street. The rest of the street is like that. And frankly, that was one of the things I enjoyed when I purchased my home. I've been here for twenty, over twenty years. And it was in a neighborhood with houses. So I'm not super excited about staring at a four-story building, especially when I have one that just went up next door. But I'm also concerned.
I just want to, I just want to let you know, Sarah, you're at about five minutes, so. You got a couple more things? That's okay.
The the construction, we have a lot of issues with the other building. They were starting construction between like six and six thirty in the morning. My bedroom is at the front of the house. It will be right where the construction is happening. I just would like them to be courteous to the the neighbors to not have a ridic, I mean, we've already gone through over a year of construction. We're gonna have this. They're talking about the other project on the end of the street. Like they said, with the Breckenridge, Camborn, Hilton, Vester, this whole area here, it's a really a lot for us all at once. And for years now, it's gonna be many years. So I just hope that they continue to take into consideration the neighbors. And then also, I still can't tell in the renderings what is at the end of the parking lot. Is there a fence? Is there, like, what else will I be looking at? And thank you. I'm sorry, I went over.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure you knew where you were. Got it. So at the Vester end of the parking lot, like where there would have been a driveway, what's there now?
Yeah, I can't tell in the rendering if it's a wall or.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next hand is Heather Van Puker.
Welcome, Heather.
Hi there. I'm trying to get my video on, but it's not letting me. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. I'm Heather Van Puker. I'm the Executive Director of the Ferndale Housing Commission. Our office is located at four fifteen Whittington. I'm here at home in Brighton tonight, though, speaking to you from here. And I just wanted to make sure that I offered our opinion of excitement to join with the community members that have already expressed. Looking forward to this really exciting development, much needed, great potential. I echo what C J said about Full Circle. I have every confidence in them as great community partners. And I've really enjoyed speaking with them over the past several months and actually first got to know them a couple of years back. So I'm I'm really confident in them as great, responsible partners as well. We are offering our support as a housing commission to this development by pledging eight project-based vouchers from our Housing Choice voucher program to that development. So we're really happy to partner with them in that regard. And then, you know, just listening to the parking concerns, I I certainly wouldn't put this out there as, you know, reliable data that we can use to extrapolate. But but I can offer you, you know, some information on what happens across the street at five hundred East Nine Mile, because that is, you know, our complex, the Housing Commission complex. What we do as a housing commission is offer every adult member of the household a wing, a window cling, if you will, a parking pass for our residence-only lots. At any given time, we have fifty-five units over there. So I looked up real quick today to see, we're at fifty-one occupancy right now. So of our fifty-one units right now, only twenty-eight of our adult household members over there have requested a parking pass. So, you know, it's certainly not a hundred percent demand. And I know that quite a few of those are for their caregivers as well, because we offer our household members the ability to request a wing, a window cling for a car of, you know, if they have a regular caregiver visiting, and they're not going to use it for their own car. So, you know, the demand is probably a little bit less, considerably less, I guess, with our, you know, older folks or disabled folks, people who can't afford to drive, choose not to drive, or aren't physically able to drive. And as far as the parking on Troy, you know, we we do ask that our our contractors that are working at the building park on the street so that they don't take up spots that are resident-only. So if you're seeing a lot of parking on Troy, we may be a little bit to blame there. I know that's where I personally park when I go visit Autumn House. And I I typically don't have a huge, you know, challenge, but I know that there is pressure on parking in that area. So I certainly, you know, hear hear what people are saying, and I just, you know, in sharing kind of our numbers, maybe can help alleviate some fears about that. And it's been really consistent through the years as far as the parking demand at Autumn House. And, you know, Whittington is about the same as well. About half of our residents actually request a parking sticker at all. So I don't know if that's helpful, but I thought I'd offer it. And I can't wait to work with Full Circle if this moves forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
All right, the next one is our council member, Brunner James.
Welcome, Cat.
Hello. Um, I'm not gonna take up much time because at some point next Monday, I'll I'll get to weigh in on this a little bit more fully, but I just wanted to let folks know who are listening that I have been following this this pretty closely. I listened to the previous Planning Commission meeting. Have attended both of the community meetings that Full Circle hosted, and there has been plenty. Oh, and I'm also a Vester Street resident, so there has been plenty of chatter on our neighborhood group about it. You know, I've primarily been taking a listening role up to this point. There are certainly things that I'm excited about. Certainly some logistical and sort of, you know, process concerns that that I share with some of the residents. And the main one that I do want to sort of take the time to reemphasize is that there has been a ton of construction in this little area over the past two or three years. And so I think I'm directing this mainly to the Full Circle folks, just to let you know and remind you that there's there's definitely construction fatigue in this neighborhood. And anything that you guys can do to help, you know, just be good neighbors through this process, if if it's approved, would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Cat. Would you state your current location for the record, please?
Yes, sorry about that. Thanks for the reminder. I'm in Ferndale, Michigan, on Vester Street.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, excuse me, we do not have any additional folks with their hands raised. However, we do have a number with the last digits as three four three. So if that individual has any comments that they would like to make, please do so at this time.
Do they need to press any buttons to unmute themselves, or have you done that, Erin?
It actually look, on my end at least, it looks like they're unmuted.
Thank you.
So Erin, I apologize. That's actually just my call-in number.
Oh, okay.
The Full Circle team, so sorry about that.
Perfect. Thank you. No, that's that's perfect. Okay, I do not see any additional hands raised.
Okay, before I close the public hearing, if there's anyone else who wanted to comment, who maybe just isn't familiar with the Zoom technology or can't find that raise your hand button, you can always turn on your camera and wave at us, just somehow flag us real quick. I see Ann Heller. Oh, hi. I see Ann Heller flagging me. And Erin, are you able to assist Ann with unmuting?
Oh, thank you. There you go. Yeah, can you hear me? Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I have my button, and I've been pressing it, and it's not working. So but thank you. Thank you. First of all, like Cat and Carmen and Heather, Full Circle, thank you. Thank you for considering Ferndale. Thank you for deciding that indeed it would be an excellent location for this housing, and especially for this particular community here. Being, I'm looking around at who all is watching this, and since this directly impacts me because of my age, absolutely. And I am so happy to see this go in place. It it absolutely means, I can say, just keep reiterating everything everybody else said, so needed. And that the fact that you've made such an effort to make sure this is going to be affordable housing, I can't say enough. Thank you. We talk about it, people that at my age keep referring to that. But this is what we talk about all the time. We've lived here for some time. Personally, I've been here since eighty-one. We've lived here for such a long time, and the thought that now we have to start looking around at other communities in order to stay in a community of some kind. The the fact that if it comes up when we have to sell the house, because it's just not possible to do all the things, the thought that there's someplace here in Ferndale, it just warms my heart. I I can't, I I absolutely agree that there's probably great enthusiasm for this for this project and fully supported in every single way. Just but a brief comment, I see there's been some quite concern about parking. And I sat for a while. I was board president of the Ferndale Housing Commission for three years. And Heather was not coding over anything. The number of cars are few. People in these age ranges, I'm sorry, in these income brackets, they just don't, they just can't afford cars. And also, as they get older. They just don't, they just can't afford cars. And also, as they get older, many, many have figured out that it's probably not a good idea to drive anyhow. Uh, and so consequently, the use and, and the great need for, uh, reliable, frequent, uh, public transportation and all of the things, the smart specialized buses, et cetera, can do, um, all welcome. And I can believe that this, um, is going to have, take advantage of all of those. Uh, I also, just to give a little support to this, I'm also doing some work over in Madison Heights, uh, an affordable, uh, uh, housing complex that has five buildings, uh, in it. And, um, I am there twice a week, every week, and rarely, rarely is it between half and two-thirds full. Rarely. The, the cars at this given, remember, you're looking at this age level too. Um, and, um, people just are not using cars like they did, uh, at all. Um, I think it's a concern. I think we absolutely, I would agree, we have to keep an eye on it. Uh, there may be some alternatives. I'm thinking about the precious green space. But, um, when you think about this, I, I want you to be, to be really careful around the parking. I would not like to see that be the reason why we would have to put the project on hold or, or something else than that. But, once again, thank you. This is so needed, and I'm personally very happy to have it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Is there anyone else who wanted to comment before I close the public hearing? Um, who was not able to use the Zoom hand raise function? Please feel free to turn your camera on, flag us somehow. Erin and I are looking. Just want to make sure. All right, I don't see anyone. Do you, Erin?
No, I don't see anyone, and we didn't have any additional, um, hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you very much. All right. With that, we will close the public hearing. It is eight oh two PM. And we've got a few questions to work through here, um, before we deliberate as the planning commission. So, uh, from the development team, whoever, uh, you think is the, uh, the, the best to answer, um, I'm, I'm going to put, I'm going to put parking in the parking lot. We're going to come to that one, uh, last. Because I think that there were a couple, Sarah had a couple, um, pretty specific questions about, um, things like contamination cleanup. I wonder, is there anyone from the development team who can share a little bit more about what you've learned about past uses at this site? Um, and also, um, some of the, the ways that, um, the site will be remediated?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to. So, this project is seeking financing from MISHDA, who's the State Housing Development Authority, and they take environmental cleanup very seriously, uh, as a government agency. So, Sarah, to kind of answer your questions about, uh, like, what chemicals are at the site due to contamination, and, and talking with our environmental, um, consultant, he, I can get you the specific name. It's like a two-hundred page report I'll have to, I'll look through, but I'm happy to send that information over to you. But, um, he kind of put it to us as the state is like overly protective, uh, for like a chemical that, that they found here, and that it's not really like a public health issue. But since there are government dollars going into the project, uh, they need to be very thorough. So, as, you know, kind of in response to that, we're hauling off all this amount of soil. There are underground storage tanks that were used for like heating oil back in the day, and that, so those are the kind of, uh, environmental cleanup things we're looking at, but I'm happy to kind of send over. Uh, they did like a site history study, and I can figure out what the name of whatever compound was, was found that's requiring us to do this, this safer barrier.
Thanks, James. Um, I imagine you've, do you have Sarah's contact information from the community meetings?
I don't know if I do, Sarah, but I can send it to Kat, and I think she could get it to you.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I know also, um, in the, in the chat, um, uh, just to draw our attention back to that real quick, um, uh, Justin added a link there where people can sign up, um, if they'd like to be, if they'd like to sign in and share an email address. So if someone, um, is looking for some specific information, please feel free to share your info um, through that link, um, so that, uh, the city staff can follow up with you. Um, also, uh, questions about, um, stormwater. Um, so sewers will not be redone, but you guys are doing a lot on-site um, to make sure that the stormwater that hits the sewers is dramatically reduced from what it is now. So, James, I don't know if you or maybe one of the city staff members can talk a little bit about how that works?
Yeah, so all stormwater is handled on-site. So the, the way that these systems work is, um, where the hookup is to the municipal system now, there's basically like a restriction valve on it. So, instead of all the water running through the site, hitting the system all at once, it's restricted to a flow, um, per the, I think it's Oakland County Stormwater Management. So while, you know, the city is, and we're doing water sewer lines, we're taking steps to this project to lessen the impact.
So essentially, underneath your development will be a system that, that holds, that, that retains the stormwater on-site, and it goes into the sewer system just a little bit at a time, whereas right now, when it rains, when our big, when we have these floods in our basements, the stormwater hits the sewers all at the same time, and it pushes stuff back up into our basements. So new developments in Ferndale, um, have to have these slow-release systems so that things don't hit our old infrastructure all at the same time. Um, and if that didn't make sense, let me know.
And James, I don't, if I could jump in, uh, like, a, a really simple thing is, the, the current output is, will be less, yeah, sorry, Jack Schroeder. Uh, and I'm in Oak Park, Illinois, but I'm on the Full Circle team.
Thank you.
It, it'll be reduced by more than half. You know, of the impact of the current. So our, our, our bigger building doesn't really impact the stormwater. And what we're doing on-site is reducing it by more than half of the current situation.
Thank you.
I do, uh, this is Erin Patel, um, with Ferndale. I do have, um, for data nerds, I can give you, uh, equivalent as well, that we got an opinion from our city engineer, because, um, we were looking into the stormwater concerns as well. So for example, right now, um, what the amount of water that would be running off the system, um, would be the equivalent of sixteen gallons per second, um, or two-point-one-four cubic feet per second. So that equates to that sixteen gallons per second. And if the stormwater infrastructure as proposed for this particular plan, the, um, output would be zero-point-two-one cubic feet per second. So that's two-point-one-four down to zero-point-two-one.
Thank you. Um, and I know that we're not, um, uh, uh, retaining comments that are in the chat, but, um, the question about, about sewage, um, that Sarah just added, um, our biggest challenge in our older communities is that our, our sewage lines and our stormwater lines are the same sewer lines. So, there may be some more toilets flushing at the Full Circle site. Um, and I'll let them speak to that, um, but really, when we get these huge backups is when we have big rains. Um, and that is what the, um, the onsite retention and detention system for stormwater helps, is that all of this water from the site is not going to be hitting the sewer system at the same time. It's a huge problem. All of our communities, um, um, that have combined sewer systems are dealing with this. Um, so we're trying to, on any new projects, the city and the planning commission have requirements on any new projects that they have to upgrade how water is handled. So we're trying to chip away at this community-wide problem, uh, whenever we get a chance. Is there anyone who can speak to, um, how additional sewage coming from this site will hit our sewers, and any information that you've got to share on that? Is it, has the, Erin, maybe, has the engineering department approved enge- engineering plans that have been submitted and said that we can handle it, or?
So full engineering review doesn't occur until we have a, an approved site plan and, um, and the, and going through the building permitting process and everything like that. The preliminary view, our, uh, review from our engineering team, um, did not cite any major concerns um, to that effect, um, but the particulars of the, um, infrastructure would probably better be suited, um, to have a discussion with the applicant.
And, and listen, Jack, again, uh, Kate, I would just second what you said. Um, that the real issue is actually stormwater and, and big rain events, and we're designing, things I think you said for a ten-year storm per code, um, so we're designing for kind of the worst of those. And, um, I don't have a, you know, a specific thing to, uh, sewage inside the building, but I don't think that is the load that really matters. It's, it's when those major storm events hit that the shared system does start to back up on people.
All right.
And also. Uh, Matt Schalter.
Commissioner Schalter, yep.
Did a quick calculation, um, and, and that's like, just that, like, the amount of rainfall during those heavy rains is about like seventeen toilets flushing wha- each second. Just, that's a, a lot.
It's like the Super Bowl. Thanks, Commissioner Schalter. So, it, you know, again, it's, it's, it's a huge infrastructure problem all over, um, and any new project has to help us try to fix that problem. Um, construction timing and conversations about being a good neighbor, um, would you guys talk? Full Circle, would you talk a bit about your management practices? And how, both how you work with your neighbors during disruptive construction periods, and how they can get in touch with you if there are problems?
Yeah, absolutely. So, O'Brien Construction is the general contractor we've picked for this project. They're out of Troy, Michigan. Um, we have worked with other contractors in Michigan in the past, but selected O'Brien for a deal in, uh, Detroit in a neighborhood setting. And what they really sold us on is that they're good at doing developments in the context of working within, like, a neighborhood, because it's more specialized than just kind of developing out in an open field. And they really sold us on that idea, and so we're seeing that, uh, at the project that they're working on under construction called, uh, Rec Center. So, you know, we've removed problem trees that neighbors have just kind of walked over and noted have, have been an issue. Like, our contractor is happy to take those out. They clear out the alleys if residents request. They keep the site clean. Um, and so there is really like this open line of communication that's kept. You know, someone walks over at the trailer, knocks on the door, um, you know, have a conversation, and then they raise the issues with us, and then we kind of put our heads together to figure out how the, you know, how to solve it. We, we don't want to be, uh, you know, a nuisance. We want to be good, good neighbors. So Sarah and Kat, you know, we hear you about timing and issues that, that popped up, and we're more than happy to continue to, to work with you guys. You know, you've got my email, so, you know, once this deal's under construction, you know, feel free to give me a call if there's any problem, or you can't reach someone at the construction site, and we can work together to, you know, fix any problems that might pop up.
And also, there was a ques- uh, site, uh, excuse me, site plan question. Um, at the end of the parking lot, um, where there, uh, was originally a driveway at Vester Street, what's there now? Is, is there a wall? Is it a green space? You know, uh, is, is it just a, a curb? Between, you know, with then some green space in the sidewalk? You describe what's there?
Yeah, so plans call for a curb with a green, green buffer. So we're now putting up like a, you know, eight-foot retaining wall. Yeah, and then.
I, I, I could picture a fence there, James. I don't even know that we've gotten to that point in detail yet, but, you know, we, we, if there was a fence, it would just be, you know, an attractive kind of cast iron or, or aluminum to look like cast iron fence.
Yeah.
I can add to this question. This is Ashley Wendella. I'm, um, also one of the architects on the team. Um, the, the most current drawings that were, uh, submitted to the city for site plan review actually show a, a low masonry wall there. Um, in our, our first round, um, we did just have, uh, like a row of hedges as a screen, and the, the city ordinance requires a, a solid masonry wall, so that's what's shown there at this time. And it's, um, three height tall, three feet tall in height to match, um, the masonry wall that's on the adjacent site.
Yeah, I'll, I'll conclude that we're, we're open to feedback on this. You know, personally, I like to see where green is always better. So if, you know, neighbors on Vester, if you want to see something else, um, I guess we'd have to talk about the city since it's the landscaping plan and site plan that requires what we've got in there so far.
Thanks, Ashley. Uh, we'll make sure, um, the planning commission touches on that one in terms of, um, green, greening versus masonry walls um, and beautification at that corner. Um, all right, I want to come back to parking. Um, a question about any local examples. So we heard from the Ferndale Housing Commission, um, any other, uh, Metro Detroit examples about parking utilization?
Yeah, so Full Circle, we're kind of new to Michigan, uh, but we do have a deal under construction in Detroit right now, where we have thirteen spots for forty-three units, so well under this, that's approved and actually is under, as I mentioned, is under construction. In addition, that's a mixed-use development where those pretty heavy commercial usage where there'll be like twenty-plus full-time, um, employees. So, the city's on board with the, the parking ratio we have there. And I'll, I'll note, just like a clarifying point, most of our deals aren't in the city of Chicago. We do a lot of our work in the suburban county, suburban Cook County, where, um, yeah, Metro Chicago has a pretty good transit line to get into downtown, but suburban Cook County isn't, you know, communities aren't walkable like they are in Ferndale. Um, very much more car-oriented design, where the bus system is quite lousy. Um, so I just wanted to add that kind of clarification.
Thank you. Um, also, a question about some of the shared parking agreements, um, in terms of specificity. I, I also, um, uh, raised a little bit of an eyebrow above Incubatio, um, just knowing that, that they have development plans as well. Um, so if the planning commission had a request, um, that you get a more specific shared parking agreement before taking this to council, uh, would you guys be open to that as the development team?
I think, you know, the big reason behind the Incubio shared parking agreement was to provide, uh, parking spots for the community meeting hub. Hence the kind of after-hours approach to the solution. You know, knowing what their development plans are, I think, you know, we, we tried to get in touch with the credit union, who's got that huge parking deck and lot across the street. I love to like, you know, get in contacts, actually get in contact with them and, and utilize spots there for the same purpose, if that's a concern. But I think for, you know, resi- for looking at truly residential, where we have, um, elderly folks who are, we don't want walking that far, that the CVS lot that's only accessible through our parking lot is kind of our best use. And, you know, that's been the most promising, uh, promising agreement. And, you know, this project is still applying for financing through MISHDA. It's a highly competitive project, but we think this is a really great project and could be successful. But as a, you know, nonprofit, we can't really enter into like a binding agreement for financial purposes with like a nearby owner without having, securing this financing, you know? The main piece of the financing that makes the deal work first.
So you're saying until you have financing and full site control, you wouldn't be executing agreements with, full agreements with neighboring parking providers?
Correct.
I understand. Okay, all right, I understand. Um, are there any final questions or comments? Um, I, I know we've closed the public hearing, but any final questions or comments from the audience before the planning commission deliberates?
Hey Kate, this is CJ again.
Hi CJ.
I do have a comment, kind of goes back to some of the things that were discussed before about environmental, probably late parking as well, and some of the other things that the community might be concerned about. Um, developers such as Full Cir- Circle and ourselves, we go out, we secure the financing, and then we have a big challenge. We have to go sell the tax credits to an investor. And the investor is going to probably put more stringent requirements on us than you would, um, because they're concerned about liability and long-term viability of the community. And they really, really make us clear some substantial hurdles to know that this is going to be a successful development for the community. And I, I just want the community to know that you've heard some great plans, some great ideas. We think that they're phenomenal. But we're actually at some. We think that they're phenomenal, but we're actually at some point going to get held to like really crossing a high bar. I think James and Carl would agree with that.
Thanks CJ. I'm looking to see if we've got any other hands raised real quick. I've got Kat Latash.
Yep. Yeah, I wanted to add one thing too about parking. And I, and this would bode, you know, getting a little bit more information. But I know that um, the public housing participants um, are not all seniors. In fact, 50 to 60% fall under the 60 age bracket. And we also know that older adults, you know, as you get older, you're more likely, less likely to have a car. So I don't know what the age threshold is for residency at this new development. But that might be um, something that impacts the likelihood that they're going to have a car. So in terms of comparing it to how Autumn House works.
Thank you.
We also have Paul.
Hi Paul.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to piggyback with what Kat said was, um, because of the type of funding source. You know, there is obviously no discrimination based on, you know, sex and gender identity and everything else. They're really, we don't know the makeup of this building. I mean, it, it might not be very many seniors at all. It might be completely seniors. But how it's projecting, we really don't know the makeup. And I would agree with the cat that we don't know, because we don't know the makeup, we don't know the percentage of people that would actually be using a car.
Got it. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
It's actually a perfect segue to my biggest question for the developer. Alright, real quick, looking at the list. Okay. This is an important one, and it's going to go to council on Monday. So I just want to make sure we have as much conversation as we can right now. Alright, planning commissioners, um, I've still got a couple of notes here about site plan elements, um, including, I'm sorry. Including the masonry wall at Vester, um, as well as shared parking agreements. And how specific we would be looking for those to be. Understanding we got some feedback, some feedback from the developer on how specific they feel they can make them at this time. Who would like to kick off any questions or comments? Let's start, we've got a PUD, we've got a couple of motions in front of us. And I'm sure we will kind of jump back and forth, but just as a reminder, uh, we're discussing both the, sorry, PUD and the site plan. Both are in front of us tonight.
Chair, this is Commissioner Braga.
Yes, Commissioner Braga.
I'm on the, um, request for local data on parking usage. Uh, so I'm a former employee of the Detroit Housing Commission. Familiar with a part of the city just east of I-75, just east of the town, uh, Forest Park, north of Eastern Market. I quickly went on the census data website and pulled up latest numbers on auto ownership there. Just for the record, it's Census Tract 5189, uh, the 2019 American Community Survey Five-Year Estimate Table B25044. And the Census Bureau estimates that out of around 823 rental households in that area, which is low, moderate income mixture of family units and one senior tower, about half don't own a car. So 419 out of 823. And if that's the site, that's mostly family units, really just one senior tower. And if this project is gearing itself towards senior, I'm pretty comfortable with the parking numbers that the developers are proposing.
Thank you for that data. I had a feeling, um, that you might have some comparable information, um, to share from us from your professional work in Detroit. Thank you. Other questions and comments at this time? Commissioner Hagforce?
Yeah, Chair Baker, thank you. To, uh, kind of talk about the parking concerns again, um, I'm actually a transportation planner for the smart bus system. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm in very much support of the location for this kind of project. Because this is the kind of project where you want to have affordable housing near such a robust transit line. Nine Mile is actually our largest cross-con route, um, connecting McComb and Oakton Counties. And then with it connecting to Woodward, which is one of our major corridor routes on, in the whole region. And the multiple routes that go on it up to hospitals, downtowns, museums, whatnot. All of that makes it so much more possible for someone to live in that facility and not require a car. I know sometimes we get affordable housing in other parts of, of the region that is maybe more country or whatnot. People do kind of struggle to try to buy a car because that's really their only option. This is an example where we have the walkability for a deal, we have the transit capabilities. Where it really makes it possible for someone not to have to struggle to get that car. Because they really can get everything that they need using transit. So because of that, I really do kind of, do support the location of this project. Probably my only follow-up to, um, with regards to the site plan. Is I know, um, there was a discussion previously about relocating this smart bus stop in front in order to, um, obtain amenity space. Currently with the way the site plan is in the public right-of-way, it looks like they have it all landscaped, um, along Nine Mile there. So, um, probably my only request to the applicant, um, upon approving this would be with the, with the basis that that site plan would be reviewed to make way for a shelter to fit in there. So that way we can give people waiting for the bus coverage and a safe lit area to wait for the bus.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagforce. Um, there had been a, I, I caught a comment, um, James, during your initial presentation where I, I thought you said, um, something about adding to the development agreement that the smart bus stop would be relocated. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, that's something that came up. Um, city attorney is still working on, uh, an, an exhibit to the agreement that's been sent out. Uh, and we kind of received word today that the city would like to include, uh, what Dustin had just mentioned. And, you know, we love it. We love the idea of relocating the bus stop right in front of our development and providing a, you know, improved transit facility. So.
Uh, question for Erin then. If there are um, some changes to that area on the site plan in order to accommodate that bus stop, which is what, uh, Commissioner Hagforce was just talking about, is that something that you can approve administratively? Um, is, is that going to hold up? You know, if we approve this site plan tied to this PUD, and then there are some changes in order to accommodate the bus stop, is that going to hold up any, anything with state approvals or other things?
I think, um, and Justin, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. But I think if we make it a condition as far as the site plan, um, motion and everything, I, I don't see any major concerns with that. But, Justin, if you have any additional thoughts on that particular item?
A condition that would allow for administrative approval?
In, in a condition that just allows for the flexibility. If, if Smart analyzes that space and decides that, you know, maybe this, the bus stop is, is more appropriate where it is current today, like in front of CVS then. So just a condition that allows for that flexibility, um, for Smart to make sure that that actually will work. And, and everyone agrees upon that. That area is city right-of-way, so, um, it's part of uh, amenity zone agreement that will be going to city council as well. So, um, I think just a, a general condition, uh, if the commission puts that in, we can carry that over to, um, potential city council consideration.
I would just want to make sure that the city and the developer and Smart would be able to work together without being hamstrung accidentally by a site plan tied to a development agreement that then you were changing.
Right. Yeah. No, I think, as long as the condition is written in a way that it's flexible, um, we love working with, the city loves working with, with Smart. So I'm sure Full Circle, Full Circle will as well.
Thank you. Anything else at this time, uh, Commissioner Hagforce?
No, um, but like I said, I, I definitely think that this is the kind of project the city needs. And I do feel for the residents that live close by there. I know there has been a lot of construction. So it is very much construction fatigue as Councilman Bremer James said. But I definitely think this is kind of the last hurrah. Like if you want to be seeing three more construction, this is the kind of project we want to be seeing that construction for. So, um, thank you guys.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holica, yep?
Yes. Um, I've loved this project, uh, when I first heard about it late last summer. And, um, it really is an incredible project. I fully support the idea and the purpose. As, as someone who is going to be retiring and, you know, not tomorrow, but you know, in a few years probably. Uh, I, I'd like some options and this would be a really wonderful option. That being said, I, I have concerns about the parking. And, and I was very supportive of the reduced parking for many of the same reasons proponents were sharing tonight. Uh, in fact, at the first meeting, I encouraged staff to research the parking use at Autumn House in Withington West, which found that on average, only half the parking that is at those facilities is being utilized. However, since the project is choosing to have this large community space, which is something else that I, I really love. And, and that space will be made available to organizations outside this facility. You're now welcoming 30, 40, 50 people, where many of them will be coming in cars from outside the area. Or, you know, maybe only five or six miles down the road. But you'll be having them come and they'll be looking for someplace to park. If this was just like what, uh, Autumn House in Withington West, I would say the reduced spaces could support the parking needs. But you're adding this external element these existing facilities don't have. And I, I'm having a hard time seeing a, a, a parking agreement that can support this amount of parking need for what is being proposed. And, and I understand that you're not able to, you know, provide something in writing. But is there an opportunity for, um, Credit Union One? And, and Heller, I, I know you know people at Credit Union One that you could probably, uh, uh, reach out to. But, uh, maybe Search Optics, if they could just write a letter saying that, you know, we would support or entertain the idea of a shared parking agreement without this idea of this is what's going to cost. And we'll give you these many spaces, but just knowing you have options. I, I think I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. So.
Thanks, Councilman. So the, the agreements with, so we saw the letter from CVS. There's been other correspondence, I believe it was with Blooms and Incubizio. Which I think were in part of the, were they maybe in the supplemental?
I, I did see the CVS. I must have missed the Blooms. The CVS I saw was for part five parking spaces.
Yep. That was a standalone one.
Yes.
I want to make sure that we're Incubizio and Blooms in the, in the packet of supplemental material, James?
Yeah, they should have been in, I think the title of the attachments like additional PUD exhibits or something like that. It's like a 30-page document.
And, and, you know, as, as has been pointed out, there is a limited ability to get really specific on that right now. But with, to those two, to those two letters, um, satisfied, we can circle back to you Greg. But if those two letters, I think.
Because I'm still, I'm, I'm still not following it. I, what, 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 I don't know who pulled it out. But the names that I have in the attachments file don't align with what was shared. Maybe if Justin or, or Erin could tell me what, what file is that's called in our attachments.
Sure. I just put it in the chat, but it is the exhibits. Um, and it is, so the letter from, uh, Search Optics Incubizio, should be page 10.
10, yeah, page 10.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll read through that if Kate, you want to carry on. Thank you very much.
And Blooms is page 21.
Great. We'll circle back then Greg. Thank you for that.
Hey Kate. This is Carl from Full Circle.
Hi Carl.
I just wanted to respond to Greg's point and really focus on what it means to secure financing through the, you know, the state funding sources that we work with. It really is unusual, right? So, we're not a developer that, you know, is a market rate where we get to put all of our sources upfront. We very much have to put the cart before the horse. We have to get the city of Ferndale to approve our site plan before a single dollar has ever been committed to the project. And we've made multiple comments to the state that this is not good for affordable housing and it's not good for the communities. But it is what it is. And I think one thing that I really want to make clear is that in order to make the community meeting hub a productive space, we need to be able to ensure that there's parking to hold those larger events. They're not going to be daily, but when they happen, we need to make sure that people can get to them. And if we, if we, as the long-term owner, can't provide for that, the city of Ferndale is going to get multiple complaints. We're going to get, you know, possibly ticketed for it. So I just want to make it very clear to everybody in the room that parking isn't just this thing that we don't have to worry about. We care about the outcomes. We care about our tenants being able to get to their units without having to cross a busy street. We care about people being able to conveniently get to the programs we're offering. So where we can't enter into ironclad agreements before, you know, we, we have these developments moving forward, we can say that this is a shared concern.
Thanks, Carl. I've got a couple. Oh, Commissioner Schalter?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say I, I really appreciate the, uh, the additional data, the specifics on the affordability that was provided. The specifics on sustainability instead of just platitudes about sustainability. I appreciate that. And I really, really appreciate how you reached out to the, to the community and you've been trying to be such a good neighbor. That, that means a lot to me as a commissioner. Um, and speaking of the, uh, the parking concern, for me, I think the letter showing intent of, because I don't know how, how far they can get if they can actually get a full, full-blown agreement right now, really. I think letters showing intent would be enough for me because they can't, there's nothing more they can give. And, uh, and if they do find, if the street of, of, if Vester does find themselves with parking concerns and the parking is filling up regularly, is, is going through and be, and getting, becoming a street with an RPZ, is that, um, a tool that the city would be willing to consider if you're realizing a sustained high traffic along the street?
Yeah, so, um, that's a great question. And we, um, we did reach out to our parking folks and, uh, ask that question and ask, you know, just kind of what would be the appetite for that? What would be the impact of that? And so we have some preliminary, um, discussions and some information on that. And we would be open to considering that if this were to move forward.
And, uh, in case anyone doesn't know, an RPZ is a residential parking, it's a residential parking zone. So to park in front i- in the street, you will essentially have to have a, a tag that says that you live on the street or you get ticketed.
Thanks, Commissioner Schalter. I've got a couple of site plan questions, um, to run through quick. It looks like we are probably going to have a tree fund contribution. I mean, it's a, it's a tight site and there's a weird easement on Nine Mile. Okay, I got it. I think anything that, you know, particularly since you're going to be looking at, um, that Nine Mile frontage for a bus stop. You know, anything that, that can be done to make sure that there are some trees, um, along Nine Mile. It really is one of the things that we are lacking, green spaces and trees. Um, in our downtown, we lost one across the street at Credit Union One, uh, when they updated a sign a couple of years ago. So like even, even the few trees that we had, um, in those, in those corners, um, uh, we gained a couple at 40999. But, um, I would just encourage, um, the city and the developer and Smart, as you guys are, are looking at that bus stop and looking at that front area. If you can put, put reasonable trees there, that'd be great. Obviously, there's still going to be probably a tree fund contribution, understood, understand that. So not really a question, I guess that one was a comment. But in terms of recycling, um, and in sort of that, trash and recycling area, I wonder if someone can talk a little bit about how recycling is managed in your buildings? Do people, it, it, does a staff member help sort? Are people responsible for that on their own? Does it get picked up by the waste management company? How does, how does recycling work in your buildings?
Yeah, so we have full.
Yeah, so we have full-time, um, property management and then full-time maintenance tech. As well, and all of our developments that will soar recycling. And then we, uh, contract with whichever waste management company. And this is like a basic requirement of us, um, achieving either lead silver or an equivalent certification. That we have these kind of programmings built into the project. It's not just about the materials we use for the building. And those kind of like energy efficiencies about, you know, it's also about operations, so.
Um, candidly, we, um, need a couple of good examples of, uh, multi-family residential recycling. Um, on a large scale in Ferndale, um, in a lot of places residents are responsible for it on their own. Um. So I, I know it's something that's on the mind of the, of the planning commission and it's something that's on. The mind of, um, Aaron, who's also our sustainability planner, so. Knowing that that's going to be integrated, uh, for your lead status is really interesting. We may want to come back and, and learn as we update some ordinances. Thinking about engineering and stormwater management, are there any opportunities? This may be an Ashley question. Are there any opportunities for green stormwater infrastructure? Whether it's along curbs or in that park area? Anything else or, or I, I honestly, I don't know if, if some of those green stormwater interventions can be done. Over the retention and detention system that's going underground, so it, it might be a moot point, but. Um, I think the city would be willing to work with you guys if there were some things you've done in other cities. That you wanted to do here, or if you, you know, identified some spaces for, uh, runoff management.
Yeah, are, are you referring to like a rain garden or managing infiltration through landscaping?
Mm-hmm, yes, exactly. Um.
Yeah, we, we have done that on other projects.
All the curbs anyway, was kind of what I was thinking about.
I, I can't answer it definitively right now, um, because I think the, the limitation we have on this site is, um, the soil borings. That we have gotten have indicated that the soil isn't a great candidate for a lot of infiltration measures because there's a lot of clay. Um, that being said, it is something we've talked about as a team, like looking into what, what opportunities there might be for adding. Um, infiltration measures in addition to the, the detention that's on site, so retention in addition to detention. Um, but nothing is in the design, you know, at this time, I think, because we need to learn a little more about what's possible. But with, um, the, the garden space at the back of the site and some of the other landscaping areas, I think there could be a, a way to. Certainly integrate it in the design. It's, it's just probably a, a matter of, um, learning more about the soil capability.
Thank you. Uh, gosh, so much of Ferndale is sand. It figures you've got the clay, uh, darn it. I know there are some deviations from EV parking. You talked about bike parking, um. You know, would there be any possibility to get up to that five EV stations for? Uh, you know, a, a charger with, with two, you know, one charger unit with two chargers or. Um, you know, is there, is there any opportunity for some forward-looking creativity there? This is a forty-five-year project and if we're not all either driving electric vehicles or in a, like, electrical spaceships. In forty-five years, like, come on, there's got to be, um, there's certainly going to be infrastructure changes. And I wonder if there's, is there an opportunity to get to that five?
Yeah, it's something we can look at, um, but. Building affordable housing is really like a cost containment exercise, so. Adding amenities like this focused around, you know, EV charging isn't the cheapest, so. It would come out as a trade-off to amenities that are probably more important to our residents. It's also, you know, relatively easy to add them later. You know, when the time comes. That's, you know, ki- kind of the reason why we did a solar-ready rooftop, so instead of doing like a pitch roof. And, you know, we're spending the additional dollars up front out to run, um. You know, mechanicals and engineering electricity up to the roof to accommodate as the cost of these things come down over the next couple of years.
Okay. Um, all right, my, my next question, and this is a, this is a PUD more than a site plan question. Although it is really specifically tied to a number of the conditions and deviations requested in the site plan. Reading through the development agreement, um, we used a lot of standards related to senior housing. There's been a lot of, of conversation about trying to appeal to seniors, but. I, I want to know if, is this senior housing and will this be restricted to seniors? I know that, I know that that's possible and that's legal through HUD. Um, I know that there are a couple of ways it can be accomplished. Um, so I just wanted to hear about sort of the, the management plan. And whether this, this is definitely senior housing, because we're using senior housing standards and a number of assumptions. About this being for seniors as we talk about important things like parking.
Sure, so for the buckets of financing we're seeking from MISHDA, it's not possible to have a restriction. Uh, because then we would have issues. We certainly have a preference for this development. For not just elders, but LGBTQ folks and, you know, we heard the comment earlier. That, you know, everyone is right, we don't know who ultimately is going to live at this development, but. This is a project that's been driven through working with community partners who've requested this type of housing and if. We don't deliver a product which we've designed to be attractive through barrier-free. Units and fully adaptable units, you know, if we don't deliver and achieve our goals, it's kind of a, a short on our end. Um, so while we can't write in a restriction for age. It's certainly our preference to serve both elders and LGBTQ folks. And we think the product that, you know, we're putting out there is just going to be more attractive to these populations.
And why is that? Because of the size of units or?
Yeah, I think a big part of it.
Such a demand right now. That's where I'm kind of asking.
You know, I think a big part of it is the fact that everything's adaptable. Um, I worked on a project in Lansing that we. Teed up as accessible, age-friendly housing, and what we found is when you really build projects ground up with community partners. Um, it's kind of like a tumbling effect, so, you know. I'll share data point around LGBTQ elder project here in Chicago. Obviously, we can't restrict tenancy based on. You know, sexuality, that's definitely illegal, but that project and the culture that they've built. Um, there is like over fifty percent LGBTQ. So it is something that by working with community stakeholders that we think we could build an inclusive culture at, you know, this development. Um, that'll really, you know, help us meet this goal in this population we're, we're trying to serve. Um, I think Carl wanted to, to add something to that as well.
Okay, I, I also just wanted to add a point like, you know, in addition to being a developer, uh, for. Full Circle is really an affordable housing advocate and the tools that we have to address the problems the communities are facing should be better. Um, but we're, we're trying to do the best with what we have. And I think Angela, the community member that spoke earlier, had a really interesting point with. How do we make units affordable to seniors that only have social security income? And one of the interesting disconnects with the state priorities for giving light tech financing. Is that they preclude us from age-restricting developments to be able to match it with their rental assistance. Without their rental assistance, if you're coming in with social security income, you can't afford to live in these units. So it's a real catch-22. And I think we're working with the community who started from, you know, we want to build senior LGBTQ housing. And we're trying to make compromises that allow for us to complete that mission. And I think not being able to age-restrict it is, is one of the biggest compromises. But I think at the end of the day, we are working with the community in earnest. And we're providing rental assistance to be able to allow actual elders to age-in place in Ferndale.
This is, this is really disappointing. Um. This is, this is a really important project and for the, actually several years that I've heard about it. You know, whether it was from MCC Church starting to have conversations and people getting excited and then thinking maybe we didn't get it. And then there was this, this new opportunity and then it, it finally came to the planning commission. It's always been talked about as senior housing and. Uh, this, I'm, I'm really mad. Um, this is just really disingenuous, I think, that. That to, to build something as, as senior housing and now to incorporate it into a development agreement. Standards related to senior housing, but it's not senior housing and. And we desperately need affordable housing. That is, and I'm not disagreeing with that. I, I don't, I'm so happy that you're bringing that. And that all of the sensitivities around the LGBTQ community, certainly there will be seniors in this building. They're, they're in that income bracket. They definitely desperately need housing, but. To, to call this senior housing and, and to take it, you know, to the public and, and now to our city council, um. When it's, when it's not, when it's, we, we hope to be able to attract seniors and we've divi- designed it so that it can accommodate seniors, you know. I wish you'd gone more upfront about that. Um, you know, we, we talked about it prior meetings that, that you can't restrict things to LGBTQ. At least understood, I think everyone understands that. You can't have some sort of identity litmus test, um, for, for housing and nor should you. But the. This, this is really, this is really challenging for me. Um. Is, and it, there's, there's nothing. MISHDA doesn't offer any programs for senior housing or they're not as competitive or they're not as big or tell me what the. Tell me how this turned from senior housing to we, we hope we build something seniors will live in.
Sure, so I want to, you know, I hear you on your concerns and I apologize if. Something was lost in translation, but I think we've always built this as elder housing and for several reasons. With the LGBTQ community, with senior housing as HUD defines it. Those age brackets don't line up with the health conditions that LGBTQ folks experience, that people living with HIV experience. And we know that that's not a good fit. And that's a good, not just us as a nonprofit developer, it's from input with groups that serve LGBTQ elders like Sage. When you talk about, you know. Feeling disillusioned by it, I agree with you. When MISHDA categorically says that they won't pair their rental assistance. To allow folks on fixed incomes to be able to afford these units, that's a problem. And we're trying to split that difference, Kate. And we're trying to say we're creating housing that's smaller units. That has amenities that specifically tailored to seniors. We're working with community partners that have been involved with this project for several years. And have enabled us to get to the point that we're at today. And when you want me to offer something else, I agree. I wish there was something else that I could offer, but. MISH is trying to tailor its resources to address the highest need. And we, I think, have come up with a very clever proposal. That allows for this type of housing to come into a community of choice. To create opportunities for rental assistance to be accessed by seniors and the LGBT community. And at the end of the day, based on rules and regulations. We don't have units that are going to serve families. And when you look at the data specifically for Oakland County, specifically for Ferndale. We know that the people that match up with these units, and this isn't coming just from me, this is coming from the Oakland County Continuum of Care. It's coming from Community Housing Network. It's coming from the Ferndale Housing Commission. We know that this matches up with the idea that we've sold you since day one.
It's such a huge need. It's such a huge need across the board. It's just, it's, it just feels like such a surprise at the last minute. When, I mean, we specifically have things written in the development agreement that say senior housing in relation to. Our zoning ordinance and the decisions that we're making tonight and.
Sheriff Baker, if I may.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if anyone else has anything to add. Who was that? Is that?
It's a question about like, I know obviously you can't discriminate against someone who's applying for the housing. To ensure that it's primarily seniors, to ensure that's primarily LGBT-focused. Is there a way that you're legally allowed to almost funnel it through the pipeline? To get those individuals to apply first to ensure that it's, it's the most common resident that's there? Um, is there, like, like how, how can you approach it to not just like throw it on the market? And have it become a free-for-all for anyone who. It qualifies for affordable housing? Like, are there avenues that you can pursue to ensure that you're doing your absolute best to? Get the community that you are in essence selling to, to, to get this project underway?
Yeah, this is a great question, Dustin. So ensuring is a bridge too far. I can't ensure anything. But what we would say that we're going to do is first, we look to what are other people doing to, to, you know, have successful outcomes? So we've looked at projects in Minneapolis, we've looked at projects in Philadelphia and we've looked at projects here in Chicago. And it's an affirmative marketing campaign, so we're not required to advertise everywhere. We're not required to, you know, beat down everybody's door to make sure that they know what's going on here. So we'll be working with community partners like Sage and Affirmations to make sure that they know throughout the construction period. You know, when is the building going to be open? When are applications are open? Um, there's some more nuance to that too. So we're working with community partners like Community Housing Network. And the Oakland Continuum of Care to address, how are you, how are you, you know, accessing the community that needs? The, the most vulnerable housing units that we're bringing online? And the tools that you're using, do they take into account LGBTQ status? As a statistic that makes you more likely to be homeless, which is something we know about the LGBT community. So I think it's, it's all of those approaches that we use in, you know, the outreach. When it comes to the application itself, we would look to community partners like Affirmations. So when somebody's coming in to do the interview to live at the building, we would pair the property management company to do the interview at Affirmations. So that people, they can't ignore the fact that this is for the LGBT community. And if they're not LGBTQ, they have to be comfortable with living at LGBTQ, um, housing. And then, you know, the final piece of that is how do we enforce this in the community once we're under operations? So every one of our developments have house rules. It's community standards on how do we make sure that everybody feels safe and empowered in their homes? And with a community like this, it's making sure that people know we're creating an affirmative environment. We have gender-neutral bathrooms. We know how to use pronouns. We know how to address our neighbors in a respectful way. And when we go against those norms, that's a leasing violation. And if those leasing violations are continued. That jeopardizes your housing. And that's, you know, that's totally okay and a best practice in this type of housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who was that? Uh, Trisha Bhagwa? Yep, please.
Mind, uh, I'm curious, um, about the Ferndale Housing Commission's take on this because I know the Detroit Housing Commission. Um, like, they were getting ready to hit their cap with project-based vouchers, but HUD has a provision that you can. They're like cap on project-based voucher by a certain percentage if you dedicate those vouchers to senior, uh, formerly homeless. And disabled and veterans. So I'm wondering whether through the Ferndale Housing Commission's. Um, contribution to the project, whether they could have some kind of senior restrictions? I was also thinking in terms of, uh, questions about how to ensure that this project will primarily tailor. Both to seniors and LGBT people. Um, very similar to what Carl just said. There's a project in Boston that's going to bring an old school to LGBT senior housing. Website is actually LGBTSEnerHousing.org. And they have a very similar kind of, um, like when you move in, it was kind of like community pledge and like where you know. Kind of like the culture of how to be respectful with the, like, intended resident population we live in. Um, yeah, and I'm wondering also the same way that the COVID- nineteen vaccine has these phases of priorities. Where like people who are like later in years have priority first, whether maybe there's like a legal way to have scoring criteria. That prioritize seniors in the waitlist.
Thanks, Commissioner Braga. Whether from full circle or from the housing commission?
I was just gonna wonder, I see Heather has typed some things in chat. So Heather, can you field the question about housing commission's policy for the supportive vouchers that we're receiving from from your team?
Sure. First of all, we are nowhere near our cap on project-based vouchers. These would be our first. So that's fantastic. For our voucher program, we do have preference for elderly and disabled status. So it is very, very, very likely, though it cannot be guaranteed, that people coming off of our housing choice voucher waiting list will be elderly and or disabled. And the reason that I stress that is because I know the elderly status, as well as having a low income, you know, potentially can impact parking demand. Well, so does disability status. A lot of our folks who are disabled are not driving because they choose not to or are not able to or don't have a vehicle outfitted in such a way that they can operate it with their disability status. So, you know, it's very, very likely that people coming off of our waiting list will be elderly and or disabled. So I hope that that helps clarify.
Thanks, Heather.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would add are two things. So, you know, we really can't score LGBTQ status higher. You know, we have to tack very, very strictly to fair housing. And we understand, you know, why fair housing is important. The only thing that I would add is in this, in the developments that we visited that are currently operating. We are able to restrict children, so we can prevent children from living at this property, which I think will also help towards gearing it toward an older population. And the only thing else that I want to share is in learning about who the non-LGBTQ individuals are that are living at these LGBTQ properties. Some of the stories shared was that even though they themselves are not LGBTQ, one of the reasons why they chose to live there was because their children were LGBTQ. And they wouldn't have had felt felt comfortable with having them visit them in their apartment. So I think there's a lot of nuance. There's a lot of stories that can be captured at this development, even if it isn't senior restricted.
Thanks, Carl. I'm, I'm not typically the one who gets exercised in these discussions, but this kind of started yesterday in really digging into the the development agreement and realizing how how careful the language had been about something we were calling senior housing actually being senior housing. And, you know, you guys have talked a lot about the very careful planning that you've done to both make this attractive to seniors as well as, you know, potentially to the the legal extent that you can restrict, whether it's sort of larger larger family groups or, you know, children in order to, again, to the best of your ability, make this senior housing. It's not, it's not personal and it's not going to stop me from being very excited about this development. Particularly the deep affordability in it means, in my opinion, that the parking is appropriate. This is probably the second most transit oriented corner in Ferndale. It's across the street from where we very specifically cited Fern Care Free Clinic when we opened. And, you know, like two blocks from from where Fern Care ultimately moved because of the importance of being on that nine mile corridor for Fern Care's patients, some of whom are certainly overlapping with the the demographic that you would be seeking or just very, very slightly above this income level. So it all, it all lines up. The the boxes are all ticked for me. This is the right development in the right place, in my opinion. It just with so many dear friends who love and built this city and want to stay here and see this as a really important opportunity to do that. It being senior housing is so, so important. I understand the restrictions with the state. Thank you for explaining those. I understand I should be lobbying someone in Lansing. Certainly having those conversations, but. My, one of my requests tonight was going to be to specify that this was senior housing in the development agreement. I I won't make that request because I don't want to torpedo this project. But that, I mean, that's how strongly I feel about it, is that if this is senior housing, there should be senior housing. So.
Through the chair. So as a gay man and and older gay man who has a a lot of older than me gay friends who who I, as well as they have experienced discriminations in in various forms throughout our lives. I I can say comfortably, I'm not too concerned about this project being labeled as senior housing. My biggest concern was a place where LGBT seniors could feel safe. Because although there are a a lot of senior housing facilities where people could go to, much like Kat Latash shared. You know, a lot of people move into them with a fear that they can't be themselves. There aren't any that are open to the general public. Or there are very few that are open to the general public where a a openly gay lesbian transgender individual could go to and feel comfortable being themselves. I I'm confident in what has been shared about this project, that this will be that type of facility. Even if it doesn't get the formal label senior housing. I I don't know if other people feel the same way about that, but I I'm comfortable with that.
Thanks, Councilman. I I really appreciate you sharing that personal experience. I I don't have any further questions on the site plan or the or the PUD motion or the development agreement at this time. I understand the limitations that we are, that we're working with. And like I said, I I don't want to monkey with that development agreement and have a a negative outcome for the overall project and the very important overall goals of it. So. Any other questions or comments on site plan? Or PUD motions? From the commission. Councilman Polica, how are you feeling about shared parking agreements at this point?
Um, I, well, I appreciate, uh, Justin sharing the two pages that I obviously glossed over. Um, I I think I I saw them. I recall them now. I think I saw them as like supportive documents and I really didn't read deep enough to them. So I I do feel comfortable with those two, two documents. Basically saying, you know, that they're, they're supportive of a, you know, an agreement in the future once, you know, they're able to make some type of commitment. I I still think it would be an excellent opportunity if they could some way find out a connection with Credit Union One as just an additional, you know, opportunity. And I would also really, really stress, and I know this is really early in the game, but, you know, once management gets involved in the facility and and planning out that room, that it's very clear to people who are going to be invited that street parking is not allowed and a please use the designated parking lots. So, but that's, that's some time down the road.
Thanks, Councilman. All right, Planning Commission, I'm looking for either other questions or comments at this time or for one of two motions at this time.
Commissioner Braga here, motion to approve the planning of development submission. This is my first time proposing motions, so pardon me.
Kate, you're muted.
Thank you. Got it. We're gonna work on this one together, Patrick. So Commissioner Braga is making a motion in the matter of 503 East Nine Mile Road that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the planned unit development application and agreement to the city council based on plans dated January 13th, 2021, with findings and conditions as laid out in the packet. Is that accurate, Commissioner Braga?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to Commissioner Braga's motion?
Support. This is Commissioner Brazen, Ferndale.
So we had a motion from Commissioner Braga and clarified based on the writing on page eight of the packet with a second from Commissioner Brazen. This is the first of two items this evening. This is related to the planned unit development approval. Is there any discussion on this motion at this time? Looking at Planning Commissioners. Any discussion, Commissioner Braga?
We want to add the amendment, developer and smart board together on if comfortable with bus stop.
Good question. City staff, do you want the in the site plan motion or the PUD motion?
Um, I think I would, I I was going back and forth about that earlier. I think I would say the site plan motion, but I would suggest the language. However, its phrase to say if appropriate, just I want to have have the ability where if if everyone decides that, you know, that that may not be the best spot for a bus stop for whatever reason. Um, I just want to make sure that that is allowed rather than have to come back and and get an approve, a reapproval on a PUD.
Thank you, but you'd like us to hold it for the site plan at this time?
I thi- I think that'd be most appropriate, yeah.
Okay, great. Additional discussion on the motion at this time? All right, then we would be looking for a roll call vote from our city clerk, please.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Epstein.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Yes.
Councilman Polica.
Yes.
Commissioner Shawalter.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, with seven votes that motion passes. The next item is the consideration of the site plan. And there has been some discussion about adding a condition that a smart bus stop may be added in front of the building with city administrative approval if appropriate, unless you'd like something stated differently, Justin?
That sounds good to me, Erin. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but I think that gives the flexibility.
I think that everything sounds good.
All right. We'd be looking for a motion and perhaps the inclusion of that additional condition if the commissioner making the motion agrees to it.
Commissioner Braga again, I mean, to approve the site plan as written and with that amendment.
Fantastic. So Commissioner Braga has made a motion in the matter of 503 East Nine Mile that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the site plan to the city council based on plans dated received by the Planning Department on January 13th, 2021, with findings and conditions as laid out in the packet. And with the addition of a condition that a smart bus stop may be added in front of the building with city, uh, city's administrative approval if appropriate. Is that accurate, Commissioner Braga?
Yes.
Wonderful. Is there a second to Commissioner Braga's motion?
Commissioner Hagforce supports.
Thank you. That is a second by Commissioner Hagforce. And I just want to double check because we did add a condition there. Have you got that one, city clerk? Or would you like me to read it again or type it in the comments?
I got all but the last few words. Condition three, smart bus stop may be added in front of the, with.
City administrative approval if appropriate. Just making it clear, it doesn't need to come back for updated site plan or PUD approval.
I've got that condition as stated.
All right. Is there discussion on this current motion? Okay, seeing none, we will have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Azar.
Yes.
Commissioner Braga.
Yes.
Commissioner Brazen.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Epstein.
Commissioner Hagforce.
Yes.
Commissioner Poli- uh, Councilman Polica, excuse me.
Yes.
Commissioner Shawalter.
Yes.
And Chair Baker.
Yes, that motion passes as well. So this will now head to Ferndale City Council. Tonight, the Planning Commission is a recommending body rather than an approving body. So Ferndale City Council has the final approval on planned unit developments and anything related to rezonings. So I believe Monday night, this will be on the city council agenda for final consideration. And any final, for Erin, anything that I've missed in terms of direction? For those who would want to follow the process?
No, I don't think so. Um, we do have that, as Justin shared earlier, and in the chat, we have that signup form. We do have a section at the bottom of that that says if you would like to keep updated. But yeah, the next time that this will be held in a public forum will be on Monday at the city council meeting. Those meetings start at 7:00 PM. And there will be a public hearing just as we have today. And then in addition to that, as I mentioned earlier on in my description, that the consideration for the incentives will also be part of that discussion. If you are interested in that part of the project and that part of the discussion, that's where that will be discussed.
Thanks, Erin. All right, to the applicants, thank you. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Thank you for hanging in there with me when I got slightly exercised. The thought that you've put into this project, clearly you were working with a lot of things beyond your control. But I do appreciate the explanations that you've offered tonight. There's huge demand in Ferndale for this. I wish you'd look at the city council. I know you've got several council members listening tonight, so. Thank you. Thanks for being with us until 9:15. And I'm sure several other people here tonight will see you on Monday.
All very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
I can't say welcome to Ferndale or anything because I, I'm not allowed to prove it. Thank you very much and I'm sure we'll see you on Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye bye.
All right, moving on to discussion items. Usually the only thing I really bent out of shape about is like front doors in residential areas. But we've got a conversation now about all of those fun things. Our potential and wanting to go through and prioritize some potential 2021 and 2022 ordinance amendments. So item number eight A, there is no action on this this evening. This is a discussion item, something that I think a lot of us have been keeping sort of little lists of items, large and small, that we would like to address. There's a master planning process coming up. And often, or typically, zoning ordinances are updated after master plans so that they can reflect the priorities of master plans. But there are some things that we may want to, as a commission and with our city staff, tackle just to clean up this ordinance in advance of that big rewrite. So is this Erin or Justin? Who's gonna give us an intro?
That'll be me.
Justin's back.
Yes, so.
Your list grew.
Right, absolutely grew, but and I hope everyone else, you know, brought a few suggestions as well. But I think we've had a lot of good conversation over the past few years since the master plan. Looking at, we've made a lot of ordinance changes, really, and that's something I can share at a future meeting with our year-end review that we like to do. But we've made a lot of progress and changes of things in the master plan, but there are some other things that weren't in the master plan or changed a bit since that time. Some code enforcement things had like required or required detention for things like vape shops and things that our old ordinance really didn't think about last year. So I think we covered a lot of ground over the past few years, but there, I think there's just seeing some of the recent developments, hearing feedback from the community, hearing feedback from council and the commission. There's certainly others that we could look at. And so we wanted to not spend, probably not spend a ton of time. I mean, frankly, I'll spend as much time as everyone wants to talk about ordinances, but knowing that it is a long meeting and everyone probably had a lot of Zoom fatigue over the week. We're open to however far this conversation wants to go, but I did include a list that was just a draft of things that were on staff's list Uh, we're open to however far this conversation wants to go, but I did, uh, include a list that was just a draft of things that were on staff's list. Of ordinances to go through. And then, uh, I wanted to share this and I'm happy to put this in the packet for, uh, others to see because it wasn't ready by the time, uh, we published the agenda. Uh, but, uh, I did put together a little bit of a, uh, like prioritization based on a few factors that, um, you know, absolutely malleable on, but, um, you know, master plan priority being that that really does guide land use in the city. I wanted to make sure that was included in looking at things were in that plan. Strategic plan also a huge priority for city council. Uh, there is some duplication, of course, in between those two plans. Recent developments, uh, you know, I think we've, we've refined a lot from that two thousand eight ordinance when it comes to new developments, but we've had a lot of new development and we've learned a lot from that. And so, uh, that list is long. Some of those items are easy, I would say. And that we could usually write as staff and others maybe take a little bit more time. So that's what we're number, uh, where scope of the amendment, uh, that really just means like what is our bandwidth, uh, what we can handle internally. Which may be where, uh, our volunteers, so Pat- Patrick did volunteer to help, uh, assist us going forward of kind of vetting ordinances, so maybe he, he will help with that bandwidth.
Thanks Patrick.
Not to volunteer him for too much, but, uh, and then there are some sort of legal things that, you know, the sign ordinance changed, uh, or excuse me, the, uh, legal kind of boundaries around signs has changed quite a bit, uh, over the years. And so our ordinance is in need of an update as we've talked about in the past. So that's where legal applicability comes into play. Um, of course marijuana is tied to that as well as, as things change, though I think we are, are pretty good on marijuana ordinances for now. So I just wanted to show this as a supplement of, uh, if you were to rank these with the weighting that I did with the master plan being the most, uh, highest priority, here's how it would rank. You could certainly rank these a number of different ways, uh, but when it came to this, you know, signs, I think we don't really talk about that. It's, there, it is mentioned in the master plan, but, um, I think that's something that we could, you know, at least start before the master plan. I don't think we need to wait for that. Um, and a few of these other ones.
Hey Justin.
Go ahead.
Sorry, just, um, if you don't mind me quick interrupting you. When was the last time a sign ordinance was updated? Because my memory might be failing me, but I thought there was, um, an update at some point.
So the last time it was really reviewed was, uh, I think twenty sixteen. And we, we didn't go with you with the update process fully. You, you actually helped us with it and your consulting role. It didn't go further than that, uh, due to a lot of changes that were proposed. And so I think everyone collectively said, let's take a step back. Um, and so I think probably actually it was probably more twenty seventeen, but, uh, so it has not been changed in quite a long time.
Thanks, I couldn't remember. Um, it was that and the lighting ordinance and I was getting it all mixed up, so just wanted to.
So, so updates that Commissioner Foster helped work on in her past professional role weren't actually adopted in twenty sixteen seventeen, is that what I'm hearing?
Right, right.
Because I think the, the update before that was like twenty ten.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I re- I remember that clearly because that's when we put it in the zoning ordinance because council was like, we don't want to see this anymore. We were having to deal with appeals from sign ordinance. And so we made this, or the planning commission do it.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we got pretty far and there were so many changes that it was, it was going to be a big rewrite, which I think we're comfortable with and, and frankly, ready to do because we've dealt with a lot of code enforcement things since then. But, uh, so that's kind of a high priority for me. Some of these other ones, waste management is ranked pretty highly on our list, something that I think that, you know, Aaron's been itching to tackle and something that we could handle uh, internally. Same with the site plan review ordinance, some of the public hearing ordinance and, uh, planned unit development ordinance, you know, those are things that I think that we have the bandwidth to tackle over the next twelve to fourteen months. Things like the transit overlay district and a couple of others here maybe are bigger lifts that would definitely, I like the residential zoning districts. If we look at those, that's probably more of a big master plan thing that, uh, we probably want to really get a wider, a, a bigger feedback on that, uh, stemming from the inclusive housing policy, so. So just wanted initially put this out there then and, uh, you know, get some reactions and see what else was on everybody else's lists.
I think the prioritization is great. My first question was going to be to you and Erin and what you thought were your top, like what are your top pain points? Um, and types of things that you were kind of looking forward to, to tackling just to help, you know, with admit daily work in administration, but also what you thought maybe we could or should manage before a zoning update. And I think that's kind of the thing that's not in your prioritization. Are any of these top ones, things that you really think we should wait for a big redo to do?
Um, sorry about that. Um, I would probably wait on the TOD and commercial districts and the residential districts. And I know I've mentioned PUD earlier, but maybe I would wait on that as well, uh, for a larger community, um, conversation about benefits, things like that. I think the city of Detroit did a fantastic job with, with theirs, at least their first version of it. And so I think there's a lot we can learn from that and learn from our own community on that.
Those are the same three that I was going to suggest waiting for as well.
Yeah, those are big. What about s- small things within them? Like one of the things in residential that I really wanted to do that, that I know Jordan would prefer be, or I'm sorry, Jordan, Justin would prefer be, um, you know, part of a, a larger update. Has to do with making duplexes permitted by right across the board. Again, um, that was a change that was made years ago. I don't entirely remember why we made it frankly, um, and it's one that I've regretted. That's probably a bigger discussion than things like the other pet peeve of making sure that front doors address the street in high density residential. I, do you want us to, to pick at these or do you want to hold on these?
I mean, I think I, we could certainly pick at the front doors and the, um,
driveway widths or?
Yes, driveway widths and, uh, there was one more related to that building width.
Okay, alright.
I'd say putting in the front yard as well. I mean,
Right.
For residential, and I guess that's why I bring it up when we talk about residential.
Right. Now that makes sense too, because yeah, for the residential districts, it's, you can't, or we can't stop it at this point.
I swear was in the ordinance at one point. I'm going to find out. Do, so when you say the doors on the front of the, are you meaning, um, garage or overhead doors?
No, I mean, I mean entrance, front, front pedestrian entrances in higher density districts aren't required to address the street.
Could be, could do something in Ferndale kind of like, uh, Buffalo does in their main street districts. I think I brought, maybe brought this up last time, but, uh, they require doors every thirty feet. I think doing something like that for multi-unit housing makes total sense and making sure that the housing has a paved path onto a sidewalk, just so we don't get like suburban garden apartment style door opening onto a green that people wind up not using either the green or the door.
Yeah, that's interesting. We, we incorporated, um, a similar requirement into the, um, updated CBD regulations, um, about door spacing. But when it comes to the higher density residential districts where you're seeing a lot of the same things that you're seeing in MX and CBD, we hadn't yet. Yeah, um, and I know, I know Deb actually was one of the ones who had to test that in CBD on a professional project. And it ended up being a pretty big conversation about the usability of those doors when it came to ground floor commercial spaces, but residential may be quite different.
Yes, I'm happy to discuss that with anyone who wants to talk about it.
What was the city Patrick? Commissioner Braga?
Buffalo, which has an awesome zoning code, super high quality.
I like awesome zoning codes.
Award winning, I think if I, uh, remember correctly, so.
Um, what about overhead doors then as well, um, if we're talking about residential?
Yeah, I think, um, that is probably an overdue conversation too, that could be more part of access in and accessory structures, um, that we could look at. Accessory structures, I should have put on this list. Uh, I apologize for that. That's on, on a, on a list that I think we could tackle in the near term.
And on the residential, what do you think, well, do you think this would be something that would have to be tackled more in the master planning state? But I was thinking, for instance, R two and R three zones, um, dwelling units per lot size is a, uh, regulation that I wonder about its origin story because I, for some of these districts, dwelling unit by block size might make more sense than parcel scale. So for instance, if, um, duplexes require, I don't know, five thousand square feet of parcels, I'm just making up numbers. But if on average, all the parcels along an R two zone street are twenty five hundred or three thousand square feet, what if instead, uh, like the maximum number of units on a street were measured at the scale like of the block? So like if all the parcels on a street together are fifty thousand square feet, then you could build up to ten units if you have like a five thousand square foot per unit requirement.
That's it.
The ability and still has like a cap.
It's a good point. I would say that, that, um, certainly relates to some issues we've had in the past with, uh, lot sizes and, um, some of our ordinance language around, um, residential restrictions and sizing, so, um, I think that's a good point that just looking at lot restrictions, um, and density within the residential in general. And like you said, Commissioner Braga, it might be better looked at during the master plan process, but I really like that point, thank you.
There's some precedent for like neighborhood scale unit caps. Sarasota, Florida has this kind of interesting dynamic zoning where, um, and dynamic zoning is a term that I've been trying to like propagate and make it become a term of art in the planning world. But where, uh, there's a revenue downtown that they wanted to like make it become a five-story residential district. To encourage development, they had it, I think, at seventy-five units per acre up to a certain number of approved units. And once it's approved, that number of units, the density that was allowable dropped to fifty units in the acre, which is the density allowed in their downtown general. Um, maybe Ferndale could do something like that to incentivize density, like near Nine Mile for.
Interesting. I haven't, I haven't looked at that code.
It's interesting and it's a little bit less blunt tool than just, you know, like the side of the street is this and the side of the street is, you know, R two is here and R three is here. Um, and then we have to figure out like, well, I mean, maybe, you know, R three is real close by, so maybe we could rezone, you know, this half of a block. I think about what we just did along that half eight mile frontage at Aiden Hilton, uh, where we were kind of like, well, MX turns the corner because it still fronts eight mile and then over here it doesn't front eight mile and that's interesting. That's a, I like the dynamic nature of that. What have other commissioners got? Like what, what are the things that like every time it comes up on a site plan, you're like, oh my God, I want to scream?
Through the chair.
Councilman?
Um, I actually have two and I noticed that, uh, one of them, number seventeen, where does owning appeals hardship definition? Um, having spent six years on the, on the BZA, uh, the other thing is I would make sure that there's a clear deference definition of what precedent is and the impact of precedents. Um, because that really comes up in, in BZA, setting, setting a precedent. Um, the other thing I have really involves, um, rear additions to homes. And I believe our, our side setbacks now or if that's the right term is three feet from the property line? Is it five?
Or for accessory structures, it's, it's three if you have fire rated construction, um, and then.
This is for home.
And then if we, we did allow for you to, yeah, um.
If, if you, but what we changed was an existing upper level structure. If, if your house is three feet from the line, you could build your second level up to what your first level exists. But if you're building out the back, you have to offset it by those two feet, which is somewhat attractive and such a, a, a pain when you're building a house and all you want to do is add an additional room on, but now you have this nice little foot and a half cut or in some instances, six inches in because you have to, you know, that's what the ordinance requires. Instead of having, you know, your house just continue to go back another twelve feet. So I would like us to look at that restriction.
Let it out, councilman. I love it. Oh, this is like the, this is like the zoning code, like each session. Um, I think some of that might have had to do with building code as well, if I recall, but that's an interesting one, Greg.
Yeah.
Who's next? This is fun.
I was gonna say, uh, you're not gonna fit me. I didn't write much of this, so.
We all did it together. I mean, it's not, there's, I don't, I don't think there's any fingers to point because we've all had such, um, a significant role in the last decade in these ordinances because of, you know, revenue constraints at the city. We, we've done a lot of this together, so, yeah.
I would just say, because, um, I, I'm not thinking of anything specific off the top of my head and I, I think I spoke with Justin about this, but I don't think I said it at the planning commission meeting. I apologize if I did and it's a repeat, but I really, and maybe I did, I apologize, but, um, I, I really think we just need a whole rewrite of the ordinance, um, at some point. And then I, I think this list really is a good start for some of the, you know, some of the specific things. I'll have to rack my, you know, brain for thinking of anything to maybe add to the list and I'll have to do that separately. But thank you for putting this and I really like your, um, matrix here, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, just to follow up on the BZA as well, um, our, our former liaison and, and current BZA chair, he, um, is thinking exactly what Councilman Pollock is and so even gave us some draft language, so, um, I think we'll be seeing that in the next couple of months. Um, and we actually also invited, um, one person from the BCA to volunteer as well. So there's coverage on both boards, um, and the BCA has expressed a lot of interest in being more involved in ordinances because they're, they do have to, um, you know, work, work with applicants who, who may not always agree with them and, and, and so, um, that was heard loud and clear. And so, and I think it'll be a good collaboration between the boards.
I had two and I, I think might already kind of fit in here or maybe it's just sort of a clarifying question. This stormwater management, um, to, to what extent, you know, talking tonight about building our, our stormwater systems for a ten-year storm, um, we all know that that's outdated, um, as soon as we, like as soon as those numbers come out, they're ten years outdated. Which is, no, it's, I mean, it's engineering standards, right? So to what extent can the Planning Commission change engineering standards? I mean, if we wanted it to be a hundred year storm, for example, which is mu- actually much closer to what is now a ten-year storm in actuality, um.
It's more just, um, buy-in. As long as we get the buy-in, um, and I think that planning, where Planning Commission can weigh in and be better, like benefit, um, the discussion and on all of that is, um, support and talking about the implications for development. Um, I think that it would be really valuable to hear from, um, some of the architects and developers of the commission and their, um, what they hear from their clients and everything as well. Um, we have been doing a lot, um, and, and when we're able to talk about stormwater, stormwater is such a huge thing, so I, I won't, I'll just say a few more things about it, but, um, we have been part of a lot of big discussions, um, with the GWK, which is our drainage district that we're in right now. We do have funding through our CIP plan for a green infrastructure plan for the city that we were, uh, are anticipating, um, linking up with our master land use planning process. So there's a lot. Stormwater is a big one, um, and it has a lot to do with our planning, but it certainly also has to do with the buy-in from our DPW and our engineers and everything like that, so, um, yeah.
So it's not necessarily an ordinance update. It would be sort of a strong expression of encouraging the planning department to take the lead on something.
Well, and it would be, it would be an ordinance update because currently we don't really have a stormwater ordinance.
Oh, okay.
How it relates to planning would be. The requirements for development.
Thank you. The only other piece in the back of my mind is that, and I'm going to circle back to Birmingham to try to get these answers. We talked about temporary signs related to public hearing requirements. The other piece is I, the builder's code of conduct that they have. Several of the questions tonight about. What standards can I hold this neighboring development to and who do I contact when there's a problem, I think can be solved. By, I never say signage, but signage in this case, because like people would read the sign because it would give them leverage. At the worksite and requiring developers to post certain things. So I'm going to chase that too. What else? Who's next?
Richard, if I could add a fun precedent for signs, Atlanta has really artistic.
Go ahead. Yeah, I was agreeing. I enjoy Atlanta's zoning code and I used to live there, so.
We enjoy other people's zoning codes. I like us. All right. Jump in now or hold your peace until the next meeting commissioners. I know it's getting a little bit late. Anything else that you would want? Added to the list or any priorities that you would want moved around at this time?
And I also just want to acknowledge I wasn't at the meeting, but I saw the materials that Commissioner Sholter shared about those other. The fences and I think building materials ordinance. So I think that's something we can continue to work on. So I appreciate him bringing those forward.
Yeah, those were on your draft list. I saw those, so I hadn't re-read that.
Yeah. And just to make sure, I don't think there's anything we can do about this, but. Is there anything that can be done about the stupid train on? Nine Mile and Hilton?
There's like, there's like an interstate state commerce legal situation happening.
I'm hoping that our new secretary of transportation might be able to help us with that.
I, yeah. Yeah, I, I get caught every single time I need to do anything.
If, if the new secretary of transportation can't help, we may need a time machine, but. I, I.
All I can say is, all I can say is letters have been written.
Didn't think there's anything, but eh, might as well field it.
Steam shovel, middle of the night. I don't know. Any other administrative? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I was gonna ask if you had any other administrative items. Yeah.
No, I appreciate it. This was helpful for me. So thank you. So we'll, we'll keep going on some of these things and we'll keep Patrick involved and he can be. Also, you know, updating the rest of the group. So I appreciate him volunteering. Only administrative items. That we had was just, I wanted to applaud Erin for filling in while I was gone and. Leading very, very well Jordan as well, but Erin really took on a lot of work while I was on leave. And this was her first PUD to come before the planning commission, lots of details, meetings. You know, feel, feedback from residents and, and you know, I think she's done a great job on that and PUDs are always a big, a big lift and. I think she did a fantastic job, so.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that.
And then I think the only other administrative item, just wanted to remind folks. The Ferndale Moves web map is closed, but it is still available online on ferndalemoves.com. So you can see what the recommendations are. I had told Tool that, you know, we're staff, we're going to keep taking suggestions. So if you see anything on there that you want to give input on, please send them to Erin or myself. There will be a Woodward focused meeting on January twenty seventh on Zoom at six thirty PM and that information's also on ferndalemoves.com. And so we're looking forward to continuing the conversation on Woodward. And Ferndale Moves fits in right with that. And so I would expect you'll see us probably in late February with a draft plan to bring forth to the commission. And eventually city council and we. We've got so much feedback and just appreciate it. And the commission's obviously been a big part of that. So thank you.
Are we getting rid of the bridge?
I mean, we could put it on the plan, but. I, I, that might be. In the next Ferndale Moves plan, but. You know, I, I think you can share that feedback. I think it's, it is a little bit out of our hands. I think because of the federal way that it was funded and stuff like that. I'll have to go back into my notes of what, what, how that was all put together, but. I'd love to see it go away for sure.
By bridge, do you mean on Woodward over eight mile?
Yeah. Oh, that story. I'll hold my tongue. That story takes alcohol is what that story takes. Just quick for continuity, because I know we're kind of switching back to Justin leading these meetings, but Erin had a lot of projects for the last six months. Erin, any administrative items this evening?
No, I don't believe so. I think that here on out, Jordan or sorry, Justin is now your. Lead, main lead and also be certainly presenting for different projects, but. We're absolutely thankful and pleased that Justin is back with us. And we're actually really excited for the master landings planning process too. So that's going to kick off here in the spring. So just, we'll just keep you posted on all that.
Thank you. To our city clerk also, not to completely put you on the spot, but slightly put you on the spot, just in case you had anything. So first meeting. Where we were trying my best to collect locations. As well as knowing that we've got a little bit different minutes system going on. Any, any feedback for? Anything you'd want us to do differently next time? Or other administrative items?
None at this time. Like you said, I'm learning a new system along with the commission. I will continue to check in with Justin and Erin as well as the city clerk. Just to make sure that, that what I'm doing is both meeting the needs of staff and the commission. As well as staying in compliance with open meetings and public records laws, which. After a long period of not changing very much, have been changing an awful lot very frequently in the last six months or so. So I will, of course, ensure that we're meeting our, our records laws. That's the, the primary goal. But I'm always happy to take input from the commission and I will work in close partnership with Justin and Erin throughout to make sure that we're getting what we need.
Thanks, Jordan. Always stop me and have me go back. Yeah, I want to make sure that. You know, decisions that we're taking. Are recorded properly and binding and all that sort of stuff. So if we, if we miss something, just send me back.
Absolutely.
Thanks. All right. And with that, unless there's any other commission items this evening? We have a new president. Sorry, that's my only other commission item for this evening.
I was gonna mention that earlier, but I was waiting for a good time. Yes.
Thank you, everybody. This is a late evening and I appreciate all of your work on this really important project tonight. And I guess we'll find out on Monday what the final decision is of the council. So have a good evening. We will adjourn at nine forty nine PM.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone.
Good night.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.